All right. In accordance with the open meeting law, please be advised that this meeting is being broadcast at a later date over the Lunenburg Public Access Channel. The Zoom link is in the agenda, as is the meeting ID number. This meeting will be broadcast at a later date through the local Public Access Channel and on the Public Access Facebook page. The link for that is also in the agenda and will be found on the Lunenburg Public Access YouTube channel within 24 hours of the meeting. This agenda lists all topics which may be discussed at the meeting and are those reasonably anticipated by the chair. Votes may be taken as a result of these discussions. Not all items listed may in fact be discussed and other items not listed may also be brought up for discussion to the extent permitted by the open meeting law. So the first thing that we do is pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right.
Recording in progress.
All right, so the third thing on the agenda is public comment on prior issues. Does anybody have any public comments?
Hi, this is Kim Duffy on the line. Can you hear me?
Hi, Kim. You did a great job last night.
Thank you very much. Kim Duffy, 1479 mess up. Thanks for letting me up and come in and on here. I am actually on my way to your meeting because I wanted to just discuss something that I've tried to communicate previously about my master plan. We've been trying to get some of the formal feedback from the school committee. A lot of the recommendations on the master plan do pertain pretty drastically to your committee, so we would love to have any feedback. If you'd like to provide about those recommendations that could impact the schools. And I have printouts with me when I arrive, so I'll leave it for your closing public comment or committee reports if that works for you guys. I also have to just find your room. I've never been there before.
That's fine. What we could do is we could do it as a committee report and Emily could do it. By the way, Kim, so you know, both my father and Emily have told me that I am screwing this up, so it is my fault. I will make sure that it's on the agenda for next time if you need something more than what we'll do during the committee update. Is that okay?
Sorry, could you repeat that last part? I just cut out.
I said if you need something more than what the agenda will allow for tonight, we can make sure that it's on the agenda for next time. Does that work?
Sure. When was the next meeting?
Two weeks.
December 3rd. Two weeks.
Is that before December 10th?
Yes, December 3rd.
Okay, perfect. Yeah, we'll do that. We'll talk it committee report out and then we'll see if we need more.
Okay, all right.
Thank you.
Thanks. Is there any other public comment?
Oh, Kim, if you're still there, turn left when you go through the main doors.
Yeah, so the same doors to go into the high school auditorium, but turn left.
Yes.
Turn left before you get to the stairs.
All right, thank you.
All right. Other than the, so the next thing on the agenda, item number four, is Chair's Report. I think everybody was here, so this will be quick. We were able to get town meeting to vote in favor of the establishment of a special education recovery fund and I think everybody for their support. Dr. Fortuna, thank you for giving me the data. I really appreciate it. And I thank the town manager for helping with the slideshow when I did not know how to use the clicker, which only has three buttons. So like, how dumb am I? The next thing on the agenda is the student representative report. There is no student representative. And then that brings us to item number six, which is review and approve minutes. The minutes were in the...
There's no minutes.
There's no minutes. All right, skip that. Number seven, review and approve line item transfers, warrants, and donations.
We have a donation, don't we?
Oh, there's no transfers tonight.
No transfers, just donations?
There's no donations. There's other donations.
There are two donations. Do you want to do, I'll just do that. Okay. The first donation is from Hannaford Helps Schools and it is, hold on. Is there a dot between the six and the four?
No.
It's 3,600.
Yeah.
Okay, so the first one is a donation from Hannaford Helps Schools and it is a check in the amount of $3,640. It is going to the high school gift account and they do not require a presentation to school committee. Does anybody have any questions about this one? No questions? I make a motion to accept this with gratitude. Is there anybody that will second?
Second.
All right. And then roll call vote. Emily, have you valed?
Yes.
Mandy?
Yes.
Laura?
Yeah.
And I for myself. So this one passes. I will sign it and then send it down for signatures.
We have to roll call vote for donations?
Damn. Anybody? The next one is also from Hannaford Helps and it is for $558. It does not allocate to a specific account and so I'll look for a motion to accept this one.
Motion to accept.
Anybody opposed since we're gonna do a roll call vote?
If it's not allocated to a specific account, where does it end up?
It'll end up in their field trip. On town, I believe.
This one's for Turkey Hill?
Turkey Hill.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right. And then these will go down and everybody just sign them as they go down. The next thing on the item is the superintendent's report.
Hi, everyone. So I'd like to start with something to celebrate. This is hot off the press news. In fact, the girls themselves are finding out about this at their banquet today. I am incredibly proud to announce that the Lunenburg Field Hockey Team and their coaches have been selected as the winners of the prestigious 2025 Central Massachusetts Field Hockey Official Sportsmanship Award. This award holds special significance because it is voted on directly by the officials who manage the games. Established in 2013, it recognizes teams that go beyond just athletic skill to exemplify the true spirit of the sport. The officials selected our team because of the integrity, honesty, fairness, and graciousness they displayed on the field throughout the season. To be recognized by the officials as a team, they genuinely enjoy officiating as a testament to the character of our student athletes and the leadership of our coaching staff. Congratulations to the entire program for representing Lunenburg with such distinction. Our spotlight on excellence highlights three teachers this week. Ms. Reardon's lesson on the 1793 yellow fever epidemic masterfully bridged student engagement in academic river, and we're good. By first analyzing the traits of fictional monsters, unpredictability, violence, et cetera, students performed a sophisticated conceptual transfer, applying those traits to the historical disease. This approach moved the discussion from simple metaphor to evidence-based argumentation rooted in the text. The lesson culminated in a metacognitive poll allowing students to connect their psychological understanding of fear with historical experience, a prime example of deep student-centered learning. Emily Clark's sixth grade science class, Ms. Clark's lesson on wave energy transfer was a model instruction alignment. She utilized high-quality video modeling to successfully bridge abstract theory with real-world observation. Crucially, the lesson concluded with a digital exit ticket providing immediate actionable data on student comprehension. This tight cycle of clear objectives, visual instruction, and rapid formative assessment ensured maximum learning efficiency and allowed for instant targeted follow-up. Ms. Pepoli at the primary school. Chairperson Scullinbrini and I had the pleasure of visiting Ms. Pepoli's classroom together where we observed a cooperative pumpkin cloud dough activity being prepared for. This lesson seamlessly integrated math and science concepts into a task that was highly developmentally appropriate. It was evident that the staff was leading with heart, fostering teamwork, and providing students with an immediate sense of accomplishment. This visit perfectly captured the joy of learning, turning a tactile activity into a moment of profound purpose and pride. Our finance update. Year-to-date spending. Year-to-date expenditures currently stand at 37.5% of the FY '26 appropriation. Once the final November payroll is processed, we project that the figure will rise to approximately 39%. This represents a favorable position compared to the prior fiscal year when spending sat between 42 and 43% of this interval. Overall, we remain fiscally healthy and are operating well within our budgetary projections. Where are we in the budget timeline? This is so exciting. I'm happy to report that we are right on schedule with our FY '27 budget build, having met all of our goals to this point. We're actually have, Chris and I have our final budget conference with teachers tomorrow here at the middle school. These individual meetings have actually been a highlight of the budget process where teachers hear what the strategy is that the principals and the district are employing for the budget, provide us feedback on that, and we come to a consensus together that we're moving in the right direction. And then what's next? Our first look for town officials is Monday evening at the tri board meeting. And then we move to early December, the superintendent's first draft and town update. Mid-December, community budget forum number one. Mid to late December, this is actually going to be on 12/17, we've scheduled it already, is our school committee workshop number one. The school committee reviews the assumptions and gap analysis and provides initial direction to the superintendent for revising the budget draft. Lunenburg community reminders. As we look ahead to the upcoming holiday season and that the chairperson is already dressed for, I have just a couple of important calendar reminders too for our families in the community. First, please remember that next Wednesday, November 26th, the day immediately preceding Thanksgiving, is a half-day for all students across the district. We want to ensure everyone has ample time to travel and prepare for the holiday, so please check your specific school's dismissal time to ensure a smooth transition into the break. Looking just a little further ahead, I can't believe it, just a little further ahead, I am also delighted to invite everyone to one of Lunenburg's most cherished traditions. The annual holiday tree lighting ceremony is scheduled for Thursday, December 4th at 6:00 PM. We will be gathering at the town gazebo for music, candy canes, Santa, and plenty of community spirit to officially kick off the season. It is always wonderful to see so many of our students and families celebrating together, so we hope to see you there. That concludes my superintendent's report.
Excellent. All right. Next item is 9A.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
On the superintendent's report, I had a question about our year-to-date spending that I know, I think some people who are aware of the surplus might ask, which is, are we in the right place if we're slightly behind where we were last fiscal year, but we had such a massive surplus? Does that mean we're still on track or should I be concerned? And I'm asking because I think other people might be wondering.
Great question.
So we are still on track to spend out our budget for the year. Like Dr. Fortuna said, we're at 37.5%. Payroll's running us about $705,000. So I project between the next payroll, we're going to be probably at 40 to 42% spent out, which is pretty good. It's comparable to last year, but I think we're spending down a little bit more and last year there was a freeze, so we haven't had that yet.
Okay, so we're on track to spend most of our money?
Yes.
Okay.
I think the difference this year for you and the public to know is that we're actually watching this, so we know how much money we have. We're reporting it out publicly at every school committee meeting so that we're being completely transparent with where we have spent money, where we still have some funds, and that's allowing us to create a fiscal plan for the district going through the school year.
Okay, excellent. Thank you. Stay there, Chris. Sorry.
Get ready. All right. Any other comments or feedback?
And congrats to the girls' field hockey team. It's kind of wonderful to hear, yeah.
I just want to say publicly that I told you this, I told you. Juliana, that time that we spent in that classroom was so rejuvenating, it made me really glad that I volunteered my time to do school committee work and those educators and those kids are truly remarkable. It was the best experience I had the whole week, for sure. It was great. So I'm glad that I was able to do that.
Thank you. I enjoyed it.
New business action item 9A is the FY '25 end-of-year report, which is why I believe you were instructed to just state it. So, Chris, go ahead.
So for all those that don't know, the end-of-year report, it's a very large Excel workbook where every expense that the school in town pays for that fiscal year, it's recorded and analyzed by the state. It's also a way for the state to verify that all funds contributed by them and the town are allocated according to their chart of account format. And what you have before you is our report that was, yeah, that was done by our consultant, TMS. If you have any questions, I know it's a lot of numbers to look at right now. And also, I'd like to report that I ran a budget report today for FY '25 and it looks like the available budget or the surplus sat at $556,136.44, which is a little lower than it was before. And that's obviously subject to, it could change depending on the closing of the books, so that's where it stays right now.
The town hasn't closed their books yet, so there could be additional charges that need to be applied to that, so the number will go down, not up.
Correct.
So our books are closed and have been closed. But the town's books are closed.
The town's books aren't closed yet, so if there's any accounting that needs to be changed or any fixes, then that would happen on their end.
Okay. Normally, the town's books are closed by now?
There's a lot of transition in the town accounting department right now, and so they're delayed in closing their books this year.
Okay, but we're, we've done...
We've done everything that we've needed to do.
For this TMS report, did you go over the numbers?
I did go over the numbers with the TMS consultant.
So we've had your eyes on it too?
Yeah.
I just want to bring up that at town meeting last night, there was some discussion of this surplus, so I don't know if this is the right place to discuss this, but I would like the school committee to do some education on what a surplus actually means. Late this afternoon, I put together a draft statement that I would read to my colleagues or have you guys look at and that maybe in two weeks we could release to the public. There was also some discussion, I think, of possibly sitting down with the ledger if available, because I just think that in general, accounting is confusing and I was concerned there were some citizens who seemed to think this money was missing and that is not what happened at all.
No, no.
It's just that, you know, I think the people in the room understand it, but for the audience, just that, you know, it is, all budgeting is estimating in a nonprofit space and in a government space. And, you know, we are monitoring it much more closely this year and, you know, there are changes. There are going to be changes. It's never a static situation. So, you know, it was money that we had appropriated for specific areas that for various reasons was not spent.
Yeah.
And so I don't know what my colleagues think about that, but...
I think it's also important that other town departments also have...
Yes.
Significant surpluses, however...
Absolutely, some surplus.
We can't say that.
Yeah, we're trying to be very transparent and that is why we talked openly and had a memo about the surplus. And because the surplus was far higher this year than the past years or it should have been.
Yeah, and I think, I think town officials are aware, but I think it would be nice for the public to be aware of the situation. So I'm happy to, I'm not allowed to because of open meeting law, send you a statement, all of you, so I did draft something.
Did she read it? Happy to share.
She got it?
Do you want to...
I think it's...
I mean, it's long.
Is everybody in favor?
I mean, it's not that long.
Is everybody in favor of having Mandy read the draft statement so that we don't have to do open meeting law baloney?
Yes. Okay. So the Lunenburg School Committee would like to clarify recent questions regarding the funds that were returned at the end of the fiscal year. These funds were not lost, misplaced, or unaccounted for. They represent money that had been budgeted, but it ultimately was not spent. Each year, our budget is built on projections, expected costs for staffing, services, and student needs. In some cases, these estimates change during the year. The past fiscal year, several of our anticipated expenses did not materialize as expected. As a result, the district finished the year with unspent funds. This type of year-end balance is common in town departments and in nonprofit organizations where budgets are also based on estimates that naturally shift over time. We understand that this outcome is especially concerning given that it occurred during a year we asked for an override. We recognize how important it is that the community has confidence in both our budgeting process and our stewardship of taxpayer resources. We are seriously sorry for the frustration or confusion this may have caused. Many of the unspent funds were the result of, I wrote ad reasons here. So I was thinking we might just point to the fact that there was staff turnover and also some, definitely some building maintenance issues that were not addressed that should have been and...
And a couple purchases, right?
Can you mail that to us now?
Yes, you can.
So I can read it now that you've read it aloud and it's not a, just because I...
We remain committed to continuous improvement in our budgeting practices and to transparent communications. We appreciate the ongoing support. So, so I'm not, I'm fine with changing. I just came up with something quick. I just thought we should say something.
There were also a couple purchases that didn't happen.
Yes, that's a good idea.
Add that to the list of reasons.
Anyone else?
I'm not sure how to simply explain the grant confusion.
I mean, the grant thing is basically that we budgeted, we budgeted so that if we didn't win the grant, we would be okay. When we won the grant, we did not go back and correct the record.
Correct.
That's it.
So I mean, if you think the public should know that in this statement, I'm fine adding it. I want it to be short enough that people read it, you know, but...
I do think, this is, this is my take. I do think that the town meeting floor comments made it clear that what people understand to have had happen is at least inaccurate, if not completely wrong.
Yes.
I think that there is, at best, incorrect information and, or at least partial incorrect information. And I don't think that like explaining it is that complicated. I think like showing people where the shortfalls are is relatively easy, thanks to Chris's work, thanks to Dr. Fortuna's work. I think that the bigger question that we have to wrestle with, especially for the statement and if we talk to the ledger, when we talk to the ledger, is why that happened? And I think that diagnosing why that happened is more difficult, right? Like, at the end of the day, the buck stops with the superintendent. And so to say it fell on the last superintendent is true, but not useful. And I think that what we probably need to have ready for the public is a better understanding of sort of the management stuff that happened. Like I have my perspective from when I was on school committee and like, how could, how could you miss this? And it was like, well, you know, we had nine budgets every year and we didn't really have full-time people most of the time. And then the people that we did have in those positions had no prior experience in those positions or very limited experience. So it was like, that was one thing. Then we, the outside consultants that we had, they were not flagging these issues for us. And so it was like, there were, there were multiple redundancies to prevent this from happening and they all failed. And so like, that's a really unsatisfactory answer.
Yeah, and I think in my personal opinion, right, and, Chris, obviously this is your expertise area as well as Dr. Fortuna, it seems like to me that these kind of things happen in many, many departments. But what usually happens is we are tracking it closely enough that we can spend the money in other areas of need, right? And that would be a public process that would come before the school committee as a line item transfer, right? So I think that granted, you know, we should be spending obviously everything in each line item based on the budgeting from a year earlier, but, you know, making those determinations 12 months in advance is very difficult and impossible, right? So generally, what happens with a lot of budgeting, in my opinion, in my experience on the nonprofit side, right, is that there will be money sometimes to be spent at the end of the year that has been budgeted for things that maybe, you know, have not happened and the board will have to reapprove moving some money around, right? And that is what we do through the line item transfer process.
And sometimes it goes in the other direction in which there's...
Yes, areas we've overspent.
Yeah, and money has to be transferred.
Because we can't determine 100% of the time what, you know, especially we have people coming and going, you know, positions leaving and stuff.
Children who change.
Right, children who change. So that's sort of my, do we want to go into that much explanation in the statement? I don't know, right? I don't, I want something that people at least, not everyone is going to understand it, but I would like us at least to try to dispel some of the rumor that the money was disappeared, right? And I thought this town manager did a great job last night trying to explain that as well, but it's just not an easy concept sometimes.
So we might also, I noticed, I think, two comments about did the schools give the money back to the town? And the answer is, there was not money to give back. The town holds the money. We simply did not spend it and then the money remains in possession of the town where it becomes free cash and then it's been on capital projects and such. So the money is not lost. The money is still there. It just, now it's in the town budget.
So can I ask the two professionals? What do you think about the statement? What do you think about sitting down with the ledger? How complex should the statement be?
I personally think the statement should be very simple and clear for the community to understand. I think we should sit down with the ledger. I think we should talk about both past mistakes and missteps, but also the steps that we're taking to correct them this year because we're working really hard to do that. And on our road to May, I think we should provide regular updates to the community about what's happening and each step of the process.
Would you be willing to provide some feedback on the statement?
Absolutely.
Yes, and I'm open to any feedback. I just think a starting point is a good place to start. Always a good place. Like, it's always good to have something to respond to.
Chris, what do you think?
Yeah, I think I agree with Dr. Fortuna. I think it should be simple. I think the people should just know that we, there was, it's not like the money was just disappeared. It was held by the town. It was appropriated. We never spent it, so it's still held by the town. It goes back into free cash and then they decide what to do with it.
So could we maybe, Dr. Fortuna could give me some feedback and I could, and...
Add it to the agenda?
And we can, and we can hopefully approve it in two weeks.
Yeah. Does that work?
Does that work for folks?
Sounds great.
And then if you guys, are you thinking you'll reach out to the ledger and just see?
I already did.
Look at that, Tony. Awesome. Thank you all.
Thank you for putting that together. Yeah, I did, I was saying concerns like, oh, we need to do a little more educating.
If you have feedback, you can send it to Dr. Fortuna, actually, because we can't communicate outside, but she can take your feedback, right, before the next meeting.
Can I ask some questions about the document you gave us? If you'd like to. So one of the things that we presented last night at the special town meeting was the increased costs for out-of-district schools. And so I'm trying to track those on the sheet.
Okay. What sheet are you looking, what number sheet?
Yeah, we're...
Oh, third page.
Schedule four.
217?
Yeah.
And 218? Are those the two that we're talking about?
Yeah, so the tuition to non-public schools is the $988,000. Those would be special ed costs.
Okay. So...
There's another line for that too, isn't there?
And then the tuition to the collaboratives.
Yeah, okay. Which line is that?
That's right, the line.
218, 219. Yeah, okay.
So when we said to the town last night that these costs have gone up dramatically, from 2023 until now, they have more than tripled.
Correct, yes. So I think one of the good things about last night was since we did create the Special Education Reserve Fund, that we could have, if we had it before, we could have taken some of the money that was in the surplus and put it away for special education costs. I believe it's 2% of net school spending. So that could have been... So that could have been put aside from the surplus, but it wasn't.
So our net school spending last year was $21 million?
It was $21,584,939.
Oh, Chris.
It's on the first page.
So we could have taken almost the entire amount, $420,000. And that would have been, had the Special Education Reserve Fund existed a year ago, that would have funded at least, almost certainly, at least one out-of-district placement. So $420,000.
Yeah, so out-of-district placements are getting very expensive. They're probably ranging between 3 and 800,000 right now. And that could be for out-of.
300 and 800,000.
Those are our collaborative tuitions.
Those are.
Those are our other, other district tuitions.
Okay. And so, just like, run this through like a hypothetical.
Yeah.
Let's say that instead of special town meeting 2024, we did this in 2024. We could have had the remittances to the town fund that Special Education Recovery Fund to the tune of $420,000, which would leave like, less than $150,000 as our surplus. And that's well within our, our surplus, surplus over the last 10 years.
Yeah.
Does that work?
With appropriation, approval.
Correct. It would have to be appropriated, but it would have been something that we could have just plugged in, and we would have been able to absorb, on average, at least one out-of-district, yeah.
Can you remind me what the appropriation process, like, how that gets appropriated? Will it happen at special town meeting, or at town meetings?
Adam Costa, there's a regulation that controls it. I don't want to, if the town manager is listening, she should hop in right now. But, my understanding is that the regulation he showed me indicated that we can include it as part of our budget, or it can be a separate budget item. But either way, the appropriation has to be approved on town meeting floor.
Okay. But it could be a part of the budget that we present.
Correct.
At this school.
But whatever, wherever it is presented, the ultimate control remains with the citizens of the town. So, let me ask you, this is a hypothetical, extending the original hypothetical. Given that we have these tripling in costs, do you think it would, was wise to us, for us to have done that? And then, if it was wise, do you think it would be wise to fund it via the surplus?
Of course.
Okay, I just, I, I genuinely don't know. Like, Mr. Menard had referenced that. I have a tremendous amount of respect for Mr. Menard, and I try to take notes of what he says. And so when he said that last night, it seemed obvious to me, but then there was like, pushback. And I was like, this is basically money that's going to us anyway.
Yeah.
So like, if we fund, not that we are, we have to consult with the other boards, but if we were to fund it through that mechanism, do you think that that would in any way impact our ability to spend money on student achievement-related items?
No.
Okay. It would always be after the fact?
Yes. It would always be after the fact.
And where, I mean, where does that surplus end up anyways? Where is it going?
Free cash.
Free cash.
It normally goes to free cash for the town, which, and they use on capital projects or extra things that we did. I think it's important to point out also, we spent 97.8% of the allocated budget, like, to put things in.
Yeah. Is the special, is the transportation included in the tuition for the out-of-district? Because we have to transport them as well.
I think that's a separate line.
It's a separate line.
Okay. So where is that? I'm just curious. Because that's something we could also use the reserve fund for, right?
That's correct.
It is! Forgot about that. Yeah. Because that's, um.
So, do you know where that's located?
I don't know off the top.
That's okay.
I can find.
I'm just curious about how big of a jump it's made as well.
It's included in 195.
Obviously, it would jump, if kids are, if the number of kids are jumping, the amount of transportation is also going to be jumping up higher.
Yes.
Line 195 on the same page is 1.5 million, but our contract with debusing is not that much.
Yeah.
It has to be.
$100 million.
Yeah, so it's mixed, it's like 800,000.
But is that, is that out-of-district transportation, or is that in-district?
Both. I think 195 represents transportation in general. It's not broken under its own weight.
Oh, is there a way to figure out how much was?
Yeah, there, I can find an actual expenditure for it. I would have to do some research, research though, on what we spent last year.
But I, I think our contract with D is like 870,000.
If you look on page.
But D is going to be transported.
Schedule 19.
Right, so what I'm saying is, you would take the number in 195 and subtract 87.
No, if you go to schedule 19, which is page like four or five in this packet, it says pupil transportation, regular day, 1 million, special ed, 491.
Oh, really? Which page are you on?
It says schedule 19 on the top. I don't know what number it is, sorry. That was pure luck, I opened it.
I thought you were just that good.
Yeah, I'm really that good, no, it's.
Are you kidding me? Pupil transportation, special education, and it adds up together, yeah, so $491,000, which is, again.
So we could have, we could have used the entire surplus.
For busing.
To fund.
But we don't want a surplus, right?
Right, right, but I'm saying like, if this would have happened.
There's always going to be some.
A different order.
Right.
This would, the issue would never have been a problem. Like, we would have just put it into the surplus, and it would have been ready to go. I know a lot of these questions are questions you know the answer to. And I know some of the answers, but I'm, what I'm trying to say is like, this is a thought process, and we're not just like, we're not making things up, we're not putting the cart before the horse.
Well, then I think Chris made like a really good point when he said, it's like a savings account, you know?
Right, exactly.
You don't expect your house to burn down, but if it does, you need insurance and some savings to forward.
Yeah, you have emergency savings.
So, I don't know why we wouldn't want to have that extra cushion when it's not really taking away from anything else, so that we're not stuck with $500,000 in special education transportation that we might not have expected if we get an extra out-of-district student at that point. What, um, there's a couple of comments that I want to make. One, until recently, our special edu, uh, student services director, Juliana, has done an excellent job of predicting who's moving in. It's been, over the past two years, that those move-ins have been volatile and unpredictable. She also learned yesterday that if we were to add a single student, if we needed a van for a single student with a monitor, that would cost us $70,000 if we couldn't regionalize.
And from this year's, it would come from this year's budget?
Correct.
So the, the issue with that is that when it comes from this year's budget, and we don't have any emergency savings, because that is not how.
We're taking it for something else.
Municipal budget, yeah, it has to come from somewhere. And that means it would have to come from cuts to the rest of the school system, and we don't want to do that. And it is really difficult, every year, watching us, I don't, I want us to be able to provide students with the services without it causing a panic or cuts elsewhere, and this enables us to. But we don't need to relitigate it, because we got it passed, so, and it was a good idea. But thank you, Chris. This is, this is amazing.
Yeah.
This is my 30th year on the school committee, and I really decided to have this.
Yeah, and I'd just like to note, too, that it's not just, it's also looked at by the state, but it is also audited as well. So if, when the auditors look at it, if there's any changes, they come back to us, that, and then we make those.
It's the DESI auditors, correct?
Correct.
Do we get in trouble if there are issues? Or they just come back and say? They just say, fix this?
Yeah, they'll just say, fix this, and you can make an amendment to the report.
That was a lot of my concern, was this report being correct.
Yes, you can make changes on it, and then so.
Okay.
But it's good to have another set of eyes on it.
A lot of eyes on it.
Yeah.
Was there anything in here that concerned you, or made you nervous about what we're doing?
Not nervous, I think, the only, the things that stand out is just, obviously, the special education costs arising. And then I think, just being, because there are some districts that only meet net school spending to the penny, and we're quite a bit above it, so that's also good.
It's good for us, but it costs us more.
It does cost us more, and it costs the taxpayer more.
Yep. Because every dollar we spend above net school spending, the town, the, the state is not kicking that in. But I'm not arguing we shouldn't be doing that, because that is literally the bare, bare minimum. Chapter 70 needs to be looked at again.
If you have questions about chapter 70 funding, where would be a good forum to voice those questions, Manny?
There's an event tomorrow night at Groton Dunstable. I think it's at the high school, but I can look the forum up. It's at 6 o'clock. Our state delegation is putting it together, and Chairman Ken Gordon, who chairs the education committee, is going to be there. We have a few people from town who are speaking on the panel. Please come, wear your Lunenburg blue. We would love to have a big crowd. And I know it's three nights in a row with the town, but you get to hang out with me again.
But it is important for.
It's a bit of sense. It is very important, yes.
I think it really helped last year, all of the people in Lunenburg especially, who wrote emails and contacted legislature. Even though I think they were a little getting sick of hearing us by the end.
That's the job, that is, that's what gets things done, yep. Thank you, Chris.
Do you have any other comments you wanted to make about that? Okay, all right. All right. Anybody else have any questions for Chris? All right. Thank you. Let's do.
I think the next one's you, too.
Substitute teacher pay?
It's actually me, but Chris is going to tell you that it's okay.
Chris can afford this.
Yes. So, the purpose of, you have a memo in your folder. I, and I apologize, your folder was populated late. It's just been kind of a crazy week.
Something else going on that, right?
Yeah, I apologize. The purpose of this memo is to recommend an immediate adjustment to the daily compensation rate for substitute teachers in Lunenburg Public Schools. Current data indicates that our district's pay rates have fallen significantly behind those of peer districts, negatively impacting our, our ability to recruit and retain essential substitute coverage. Currently, Lunenburg Public Schools compensates daily substitutes at a rate of $85 per day for a six-and-a-half-hour day. Our review of the five surrounding districts' schools, Leominster, Nishober, Sizer, Air Shirley, and Fitchburg, reveals a highly competitive market, where Lunenburg is currently the lowest-paying district among the sample group. The following rates are currently offered by our neighbors. Nishober Regional, $125 a day. Fitchburg Public Schools, $125 a day. Sizer School offers a range of $112 to $125 a day. Leominster Public Schools offers a range from $100 to $120 a day. And Air Shirley Regional is $97.50 a day. The average daily substitute rate across these surrounding districts is $111.90 a day. Currently, Lunenburg's rate of 85% is $26.90 below the regional average. This disparity places the district at a significant disadvantage, as prospective substitutes can earn nearly 32% more by accepting assignments in neighboring towns. Our FY '25 budgeted amount for substitutes was $149,500. What we've spent as of 11/16/25 is $29,175.17, with the remaining balance of $120.325. Given the remaining balance in the substitute line item, we believe there is fiscal capacities to support a rate of adjustment for the remainder of the academic year to ensure our classrooms remain fully staffed. So my recommendation this evening is to align Lunenburg Public Schools with the current regional market average and ensure we attract high-quality candidates to dates. I recommend increasing the daily substitute rate to $112 per day, effective immediately. This figure is derived directly from the regional average of $111.90. By adjusting our rate to $112, we move from the bottom of the pay scale to a competitive median position comparable to Sizer School and exceeding the base rates of Air Shirley and Leominster for their non-licensed substitutes. Our substitute position rate of pay would be for a daily substitute, $112. We would also increase our long-term substitute from 16 to 40 days to $127 to remain competitive with the range. And we would keep our long-term substitute for 41-plus days at the current rate of $260. I respectfully request the school committee vote to approve the increase of the daily substitute teacher rate from $85 a day to $112 a day, and the long-term substitute pay, 16 to 40 days, to $127 a day.
So, can I make a comment? If you did seven, seven hours of work at $15 an hour, which is the state minimum wage, you would make more than $85 a day. So if I went and worked at Dunkin' Donuts, I would make more than working as a substitute teacher?
Correct.
Okay.
And, uh, this comparison that I use often is, I was substitute teaching 30 some odd years ago. I received $75 a day then, in the small towns like Lunenburg.
So the cost of this, have we figured in the para-contract? We pay, I cannot remember the exact details, and I don't have it in front of me, but we, we pay paras at the sub-rate after they hit a certain number of hours. Have we figured that into this? Because this was actually last, maybe two years ago? The para-contract took a long time. We were discussing, we tried to raise subpay last year, and then there just wasn't room in the budget, which was really unfortunate. Does this affect that as well? We will.
Yeah, so, just for some numbers, so, at the same time last year, we had spent through November, $57,090.96.
Why have we spent less?
This year?
Yeah.
Because we can't attract subs.
So what happens when a class doesn't have a sub?
We pull a para to do, from a student who needs the support of a para to cover the classroom. That would be uncovered for the day.
Okay.
And we pay them the daily sub-rate.
We do. When we pay them the daily sub-rate, where does that extra pay from the daily sub-rate come from in the budget?
The sub-line.
That comes from the sub-line?
Yeah. So we're about $28,000 less right now, spent out than we were last year. And I ran the numbers, so for last year, we had budgeted the same amount. It's $149,500. We transferred in 50, so we spent about 202. But we're less than 20% spent out right now for the year on substitute pay, because the $29,175 divided by the, what was budgeted, it comes out to be about 19%. And we're just, we're, we're not getting the substitutes right now that we did last year.
Oh, yeah, you don't have to, I mean, we absolutely need to do this. I just want to make sure that when we're calculating in how much we're going to spend, we're not just going off of that, because it's also, we'll, we'll have subs finally to pay, but it also does affect the paras. Okay. But we kept that in mind. I just wanted to make sure, um, is $112 enough, or is that what we can afford right now at this time?
I think that's both enough and what we can afford at this time. I'm trying to be very conservative with the number. Like Dr. Fortuna said, when we took the numbers, we took them at the low end of what the other districts are offering. So, for example, Leominster offers $100 a day for a non-licensed teacher, and $120 a day for a licensed teacher. I believe in Fitchburg, they offer $150 a day for a licensed teacher. So, when we took the average, it was from the low end of what the surrounding districts were offering.
I think this is great. Very happy that you found room in the budget, because it really bothered me that we couldn't do this last year, because we are just not paying the subs enough.
If I could maybe, I, I do think it matters, and the reason why I think it matters is because one of my children had, there was Spanish class like three years ago, or two years ago, that had like multiple subs, and it was so difficult for those kids to get traction. He had, you know, real learning loss, because there was no sustained plan or direction, and it wasn't anybody's fault, it was just the fact that like, the subs, we couldn't retain one long enough to make it. It was just the fact that like, the subs, we couldn't retain one long enough to make it work. And so like, there are student achievement impacts, and there are real examples of it. So I think that, you know, increasing the, the rate is something that we need to do to remain competitive. By the way, Dr. Fortuna, your seventy-five dollars in nineteen ninety-five would be a hundred and fifty-nine dollars and eighty-four cents today. So, I think that we, we do need to do this, so, I'm glad we have the money to do it. Any, any other comments or questions?
I think it's great because just like Dr. Fortuna was saying, if we're taking paras away to sub for other teachers during meetings or absences or whatever is going on in their life, then those kids that are specifically allotted that para for a reason is not getting the support they need.
Yeah, that's a real...
Which is going to end up causing many other chain reaction problems.
We already have paras tracking the time that they're missing because it will result, in some cases, in compensatory services.
Which are more than, more than eighty-five dollars a day a cost?
Correct.
Okay. Did you have anything?
Well then, I motion to raise the subpay to a hundred and twelve dollars for a teacher substitute. A hundred and twelve dollars a day, long-term substitute sixteen to forty days, a hundred twenty-seven dollars in the long-term substitute forty-one. More than forty-one days, two hundred and sixty dollars.
I second?
All in favor? Alright, excellent. Thanks, Chris.
Thank you. This is, this feels good. Be sure you won't be... I know, we got it.
The revision of the FY twenty-seven capital plan vote.
Yes, so, after meeting with the Capital Planning Committee and a separate meeting with the Chair of the Capital Planning Committee, and after extensive discussions with Chris Stevens, we realized that the order that we had, some things needed to be separated out in order to actually have the work occur. So, um, what we have in fiscal year twenty-seven right now is the primary school feasibility study for the entry and driveway expansion, and the primary school designer services for playground equipment. Figuring we need those before we can proceed with the construction or the actual building of the playground. One thing that we do have that we're very excited about is we have quotes, at least verbal quotes, for most of these items. There's one slide, the hidden slide, that you can see for the Turkey Hill hot water tank, which was one of the school committee's priorities. That falls below the level for a capital expenditure for the quote, so that's why that slide is hidden right now.
That is significantly less.
That's good.
Yes. So we could probably...
Just take it off.
Fingers crossed we can find a place for that at the end of this year.
Correct.
That's great. Okay, that is fantastic. Can I give some feedback on this, based on our meeting? So we have been told by Capital Planning, they don't want ranges, so for the first slide, just pick the twenty-five thousand dollar number. Because they, Capital Planning, the way they do, they put it all on a spreadsheet, and they, they can't do ranges. For the school door intercoms, if it's per building, we should put the total price very clearly up there.
Thank you, Chris.
I'm very excited about that hot water tank. The field, the field is gonna be weird.
Yeah, the field probably won't, all of it won't be a capital project. We'll have to think of a way to fund it because it'll exceed the capital project budget.
I think it's gonna end up having to be regular borrowing, but...
So, Chris walked the field today?
Yeah, tomorrow.
Oh, tomorrow.
Tomorrow at ten AM.
That's right, today's not Thursday, it's only Wednesday.
I know, right? It's been a very...
They're walking the field with Gail Construction, and there's a couple of other firms that Chris, Chris Stevens hasn't heard back from yet, but we'd like to get their opinion as well.
Okay, I appreciate the speed at which he's getting this done. Can you just educate me on the Capital Planning Committee? I know they put all these requests from all the different groups together. What happens if they don't fund, like, you know, up to slide ten? Do we just bump it to next year? Is that usually what happens? Is there a amount they usually commit to, or is it just...
I think reasonably what we can expect to have funded this year are, is the work for the primary driveway and the primary playground.
And I'm hoping they'll throw in intercoms or a lawnmower.
Yep.
Okay, and where, there was an update. Where did the update go? There was also an update on our capital projects that I appreciated.
Oh, yeah, there is an update for FY twenty-four and FY twenty-five.
Was that a slide or was that a...?
No, it's just a memo. It's a PDF, let me, it's the Scan, Chris Stevens document, I forgot to rename it.
Okay.
For the fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five, capital improvements progress at Turkey Hill, we have completed our security upgrade. It was completed in October, and all invoices have been paid. The total cost for that was one hundred thirty-four thousand two hundred ninety-nine dollars. The fire alarm project was completed in August twenty-twenty-five, and all invoices are paid. The cost for that was three hundred twenty-two thousand two hundred forty dollars. The exterior door upgrade, which was not all the exterior doors at Turkey Hill, which is important to note...
So we should put that part of it on there as well?
Was completed August twenty-twenty-five, and all invoices paid. The cost of that was a hundred and sixty-four thousand four hundred eighty-two dollars. And the mini-split project completed in August twenty-five, all invoices are, at primary, all invoices are paid. The cost of that was four hundred ninety-nine thousand nine hundred dollars. We currently do not have any capital planning projects scheduled for FY twenty-six.
We finished a lot? Did we finish them all?
Some of these were scheduled.
Yeah, this was a very, so there was a lot of delays. Oh, because we don't have any money for it. So we still need to ask, but, I mean, for this year, because we didn't, we finished everything that we already got. So anything on here that wasn't exactly what they allocated for, or the parameters changed a little because we couldn't afford it, we should note for them. So, um, like, if, if parts of it went undone, or if it costs... I guess I'd like to see also how much we have been allocated compared to this. Is this a scan of a printout?
Yes.
Okay. Just gonna bite my tongue.
Thank you.
So, yeah, if, yeah, if we could note how much had been allocated, I think they would appreciate it in the, in, in our new transparent way. And also, it would be useful for me because I cannot remember how much we had allocated in the scope of each project. We can definitely do that. Like the mini, the mini-split project, the one completed August twenty-twenty-five, that was part two. So we should say how many units we had asked for and how many were completed, and how much there is left to go. But other than that, I like that we're doing an update. The Capital Planning had kind of asked for an update. Which I also think is nice because they give us all this money and they don't get updates. We could stick some pictures of the mini-splitter.
Mini-splitter two, we can throw a mini-splitter two then.
I don't know, some happy students who weren't dying in the heat. Maybe not, but...
Can't do that right now.
Do we have to accept the revisions?
So because it's changed, we have to vote on it again?
Should we move to...
I would, I would make a motion to approve the capital plan recommendations as described in the document.
I'll second that.
Alright, all in favor?
Hi.
Yes.
Alright. Next thing on the agenda. Can we do this? I, I just wanna, we're all here. Kim is here. Would you mind, would anybody object if we took her out of work?
No, no, let's not make...
Because we're gonna be here forever, and you don't need to be here forever.
You lasted at town many longer than me. But yeah, happy to do this either.
So, let's, let's do a, a subcommittee update from Emily, and Emily can introduce Kim.
Master Plan.
So what's going on? Why have I messed this up?
So, back in September, Kim and the Master Plan Steering Committee sent out some information asking for feedback from committees across town, including the school committee, based on the goals and recommendations that we've been working on. Wanting to know which parts the school committee felt they were responsible for, which ones they felt really strongly about, what were needs versus wants, things like that. So, there was a spreadsheet we were supposed to all discuss and then decide what we think.
You gotta hassle us if we're having this stuff.
Oh no, she did.
And share with the Master Planning Steering Committee to put on the master spreadsheet, which helped design the goals that Kim presented yesterday.
I was surprised about how much of the master plan involved people asking things. Not surprised. I think it's a good thing that we're such a big part of the town, but it's, we definitely feature a lot.
Super, super condensed.
So, yeah, what the printout is in front of you is, the, there's an Excel spreadsheet that was also forwarded. If you prefer to look at that electronically. But this is just the recommendations provided through public feedback relevant to the school committee. And, you'll notice on the top row, there's columns that ask questions to try to prompt, you know, your board's discussions, as well as answer those to help us, the Master Plan Steering Committee, as well as our consultant, understand, right, is this actually relevant to you? You know, if, you know, we were to try to get the other boards, as well as your board, to implement this going forward over the next ten, twenty years, what is the impact of doing that, whether it's like a bylaw, money, maybe you're working on other projects and you actually don't want to do this. You know, any sort of information along those lines would be very useful for us because obviously we don't want to put something in our master plan that is, you know, maybe not accurate. I mean, because this, this was all through public feedback, but, and then combined through the consultant. So, we just want to make sure we're all aligned with here, the public, this is what they want, and can we actually do it?
Is it something that can be implemented, or is it already happening?
Right, already happening. Yeah, exactly, because there's been a lot of things on here that, you know, we've been reviewing, and we're like, oh, well, we're actually already doing this, but people just aren't aware of it.
So, can, can I just go through quickly and like, give you what I think the answers are to some of it? So, allow and continue to allow the use of school grounds and community events. So we, that is within our purview. We do have policies, and we, the policies you can get from Liz, I don't remember them off the top of my head, the numbers. This is something that we enjoy doing, and, you know, the school is a town resource, and we do that, the only, and please correct me if I'm wrong, the only thing that we do is we prioritize school-related events. Then the next tier down is town, and then after that, it's, it's done differently. There are costs that are all readily available. So that one, I think, is straightforwardly dealt with. Inventory and create a long-term plan for all town-owned buildings and land. We do this already, and this is also governed by policy. I can provide you with those policies. The one thing I am gonna tell you is something that you probably are already really aware of, especially because you know my dad. The property division, like, if you looked at the, the deed, the property division among the Brooks House, Passios, and other school is not clear. So, we don't really, and I don't think that in the five years I've been on the school committee, anybody has ever said that this is the answer to that. So, that is some, that issue is beyond our control. I mean, we can't change what the deed said, but...
Clearing it up isn't, but it just hasn't. There's been so many other priorities.
Yeah, and like, the, the, one of the issues is if you look at the deed for the Brooks House, it was a donation to the town from a farmer done in, you know, the eighteen forties or something. It's ancient. I mean, it's, that, and that's not the oldest one that we had to deal with. So they're, they're like truly ancient documents. Renovate Turkey Hill, that is something that we are gonna talk about tonight.
Specifically, was renovate, why didn't renovate Turkey Hill get put there as opposed to...
That was the most, like, that was the most public feedback, was to renovate versus knocking it down and building a new one.
Okay, no, that's really good information.
Even though we talked about both options, but during public forums and public meetings, we've had the surveys. That's what people checked off the most.
No, this is fantastic information, which is why I think we should be working closely with you guys because you're about to disband and finish your project.
But then Reform and Implementation Committee, so, we're not going anywhere.
Because I think there's a lot of partnership there, and knowing that information is really valuable information.
Yeah, that's, that's why I think it's especially important to like, bring this all back to the committees, because, yeah, that's not the first thing that, time I've, I've heard a committee say that, like, oh, that's great to know, you know?
So, I, I think we're gonna talk about the MSBA stuff later. Because I don't want to narrow ourselves into a choice because it's on the master plan. So, I would prefer to phrase it differently.
Yeah, in terms of context of the master plan, it's not like a, these are all the things that we absolutely have to do. It's a list of things that like, the public has expressed that they want, so that it will help guide our decisions going forward through all the committees. And, and if we have the opportunity to do these things, obviously, like, we will be able to get to all of them. It's just, as the opportunities arise, like where funding opens up, or that we're approved for funding for certain things, then we might be able to do them, you know? So it's, it's not like this is going to govern the budget or govern like, what everybody does. It's just, this is the framework that, you know, we're required to have, and we want to have.
Yeah, and I think there's a lot of, I know we're gonna talk about it in a little bit, but I think there's a lot of debate on whether we renovate or build a new school, and I think it's pretty, I would say it's pretty split, but this was more. You know what I mean? Like, it's, it's very, there's so many pros and cons to both of them that I think it's hard for the public to make an ultimate decision on what they want because we don't have all the information yet.
My concern would be that if the evidence became overwhelming that building new was the way to go, we'd be at a little bit of an uphill battle because people could point to the master plan and say, no, we've been planning on renovating.
I think we could even say renovate.
Or rebuild.
Or, um, develop a plan for Turkey Hill. The only thing the master plan, I think, what we kind of came to, similar to what the school committees kind of come to, is that we've been talking about this forever, and there's never a plan in place.
Figure out Turkey Hill.
Right, like, so I think we also had similar discussions, like, we just need to do something with Turkey Hill, and we need to figure out what that best choice is gonna be. And everyone's kind of at a standstill right now.
Yeah, and obviously it kind of can, competes with other building priorities that we've identified through this plan, which includes Bright Town Hall and Ritter. You know, and then also, you know, our parks, Marshall Park. So we have a, a big grouping of, like, these seemingly prioritized groups of projects identified through this, that like, the plan is, okay, so we have these four or five different areas, we don't want them to compete with each other. Now that we know we have these four or five different areas, how can we plan to be able to do all of these? If, you know, or maybe we have to pick only three, but through the budget, because we can't pay for it all. And obviously, if we don't have a plan, we don't do anything. So, yeah, it's just, we have to identify all the things, work them together. And so Turkey Hill's just one part of it.
The next thing on here, develop a five-year strategic school forecasting plan. We are doing that. It will be unveiled.
We're doing, we're doing three. Three is probably the most realistic that we are...
Three is generally how long contracts last, it's how long we really can plan for.
So, Kim, one thing I wanted to point out, and, and why this might be an issue, is Massachusetts law governs the length of collective bargaining agreements, and it sets them at three years. And because almost all of our employees are subject to the collective bargaining agreements that exist, a five-year plan for a school doesn't really fit. It's like asking, you know, what five cars do you want for your, or five tires do you want for your car? So for us, it's really a three-year strategic plan for that reason. So like, a five-year plan would be especially pointless because it's gonna land in the middle of a contract. So, for us, it's just a little different.
Yeah, that's fair. I think that is exactly the feedback we're looking for, is because stuff in here is five, you're like, well, this only makes sense to be three. And I think that makes total sense for, I guess, it sounds like for, I guess, pay, like, you know, salaries and, and all of that. salaries and, and all of that.
Right. It's our biggest.
It's our driver.
It's our cost driver.
Okay. Yeah, cause I, I think, uh, for, yeah, for funding, cause but you fund other things besides that, right?
Correct.
Yeah. Are those other things able to be funded on a longer term?
They really aren't, um, given the volatility of the markets and the changing population of students that we serve, three years is what I feel comfortable with. Anything after three years would be a guess and would not be helpful at all. Um, we are going to do this as part of an entire strategic planning process, not just for a fiscal strategic plan. The fiscal strategic plan will follow our educational plan for students.
Okay. Good to know. Thank you.
The next one, continue to provide after-school extended care options. We already do this. There's policies and I'm sure that Liz can provide you with the numbers. The last three are all related and I don't know the answer to those, but it has to do with community gardening, the greenhouse and public access of the greenhouse. Didn't we do a polit, Liz, did we do a policy about this two years ago?
About the greenhouse?
Yes.
No.
Okay.
No, we don't have a policy about the greenhouse.
I will say that.
Who knows a lot about the greenhouse though is John Garen.
Yes.
She's a science teacher at LHS and she runs the horticulture classes. So she would know a lot about the greenhouse.
I will say that if we can find a way to do something like that, that it definitely helps when we let the community be part of, e- experience the joys of this building, um, when it comes to getting funding for a new school, uh, cause it, it, it just engenders a lot of goodwill.
Yeah, and then other people get to come and see the school. Like for example, I'd never been to the schools, cause I had no reason to until a couple of weeks ago, um, you know, to see Turkey Hill exactly. So that by itself, just being there and having a reason to go to the school automatically like gives you more of an opinion, um, yeah.
Yeah, and it, it helps tie us in. And I know there are logistical and safety and privacy reasons that we don't just invite the community into the school, but there was a trend for us to become kind of a separate island. And I'm very aware of that going into what's gonna be trying to get Turkey, something with Turkey Hill funded, that, that we should be making overtures.
Kim, can I ask you a question about the, the gardening stuff?
Yes.
Are you looking for us to develop a policy or do you, cause like we don't have one? Do, does master planning need us to develop one?
So if we were to do this, the question is, would we need a policy? And if we do need a policy, then we would need to have one made in order to make it happen.
Okay. All right.
That's all, that what I'd really need to know is like if, do these things like, right? Do we have a policy already? Right? Do we plan, want, if we need, if we wanted to do this, do we need to make a policy?
I, I think given the, the nature of the security and privacy concerns, we would need to have some kind of policy. Don't you agree?
I agree. Do we still do the plant sale? We did, we do plant sale before town meeting, which is.
Oh, that's the same, yeah, so we do, Dawn does, Dawn's amazing.
I know Dawn is amazing.
Retiring.
What?
She's retired.
Yeah, she publicly posted it on her Facebook.
Oh, that's gonna be a real loss, cause she was a.
Yeah. And she runs homecoming freight, but she says she has someone to.
Uh, Tori, Mrs. Tori is the backup for, she's gonna be the new.
Okay. Yeah, she, I, Mrs. Garen just said that at some point recently publicly, that she was retiring soon.
And that's why we have, like, when you walk in our building, there are beautiful plants and then she swaps them out in other parts of the schools. So there's live plants where the kids are. And I think that's just such a, it's a really small thing, but it just adds.
Yeah.
Have you didn't been to the building?
No, I've only been to the auditorium.
It's like a veritable.
And this room.
It's kind of a mirror of that wing, so just keep going down the hallway on the right and then you'll.
Oh, nice. Yeah, I will definitely.
It's beautiful and it's such a nice thing for the kids.
Yeah.
Anyway, so.
So do they have programs like within the school, like during, during school hours or like?
They have a classes.
Okay.
Horticulture class.
Yep. And then, yeah, they do the, the public plant sale, which I think is a really nice thing, way to connect the gardening program to the public.
Plus. What's, what's the vision of the public using the greenhouse? I'm curious what that would look like.
It's a great question. Um, I think that the level of feedback didn't quite get into that level of detail, um, in terms of like what we would use it for. But I mean, I think it would be, I, I mean, I don't really know what the greenhouse is used for now. Is it just for like ornamental plants? Is it for, is it rated for like edible foods or, you know, like vegetables or just kind of other types of plants? I think it would really.
More about plants than you're letting.
What?
You know more about plants than you're letting us.
Oh, I do, I love a little bit of gardening.
I feel like when it was brought up, it was more about engaging the community more, but also if it wasn't being used often enough, is there a way we could get more use out of it?
It is being used frequently.
Yeah.
Okay. Good to know. Yeah, I think that's just something a lot of people just don't know.
Yeah. These were informed, they sent out a lot of surveys that people, well, it was like three, so.
Um, there are three surveys and like four public meetings.
So they had public meetings and they had surveys where people could write their own suggestions?
Yeah.
And a surprising number of them included the greenhouse at the school.
Yeah, some of the questions they were prompted, you were able to like give, like write free text comments under each of them as well. So all of that was combined. So, um, the, the surveys were designed to be like very broad at the beginning and then as people provided feedback, it was tailored more and more specific.
Well, I'm very cognizant that the community funded the greenhouse and MSBA and did not. My only trepidation, trepidation with this is that it's a classroom space where the materials stay in the classroom that they're using. Um, and they do really wonderful things, like they graft plants together to create new varietals. I, I have one in my office right now. Um, so that would be my only trepidation about the public access to the greenhouse.
I think we could, I think we could come up with some solutions, like if it's just a plant night where we have people repotting, like I think we could.
Yeah, something like that would be great.
Or during school.
Yeah.
Or more public notice about the plant sale and more advertisement about the plant sale, um, just to highlight it.
Yeah, I think it's like, you know, it was just to evaluate the idea and like what limitations would we need to establish, like, and with relatively like no information really about what the greenhouse is currently used for. So there's a lot of.
Yeah.
Yeah, things to add.
Dawn Garen will be able to answer each and every one of your current questions.
We're generally pretty defensive about, um, keeping the public, or our school spaces safe and from.
Which, yeah, so that's important, yeah. So now knowing that, right, it is an active classroom, that students actively use it, right? So I think, um, you know, I don't think anyone would want to like intrude on the student space and having those other events, like, you know, for plant sale, like, or like other events happening there, I think would be, um, a good kind of compromise. So, but you don't have to decide that today. It was just a evaluation of, and now I've, yeah, written down all of that.
And it's also just good to know that that's what the public is thinking, that.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, and so, so we, obviously we have gardening in the school program, um, is developing community garden. I think that's probably outside of, of this. It was more towards the second half of that. Um, so yes, we already, so continue to incorporate gardening into school program. So I guess what's keeping, the question here is like, what's keeping this program alive, like to, you know, long-term? I know right now we have the teachers to do it and it's active, but like how would we, the public like wants to ensure that that continues.
Appropriate funding.
It aligns, it aligns with the educational standards set forth by the state for the high school.
Okay. All right. Other side? Sorry, it's two sides.
There's more.
The rest.
Deceiving, but there is not, it's not a whole page.
Fund school steam part, uh, programs as part of the school budget, uh, that is within our control and it is based on appropriations from the town. Um, the other thing that I, I would say is that a lot of the curriculum requirements are set forth by DESI and we don't have control over those. But how you create classes that meet that curriculum requirement, that is something that teachers would do without the school committee.
But yeah, I would argue that this is outside the scope of the master plan and.
Yeah. The, create a Lunenburg trades program, I, that would be a great idea, but again, it's based on appropriations and we would, that's something that we would definitely be looking, that I would, I think that we should be looking into.
We are also limited by our contract with Monty Tech.
Correct. We're can, we're limited by state law that we can't offer any of the same programs that Monty Tech offers. We have to offer something unique and different.
Participate in Monty Tech. We cannot duplicate or replicate the programs being offered by Monty Tech.
I think this definitely is something the state would have to be more involved in.
That's the state. If the state changed the rules, that would be fantastic, um, so that we could offer our students a little taste of the trades program or a large taste of the trades program. But we are, we're bound by that contract as much as.
It's a Monty Tech contract?
Yes.
Well, yeah, and it's the, it's the law.
It's state law governing, um, uh, technical high schools.
It's.
So is the state law like, we have a trade school within ten miles? Like you can't, do we forget it or?
Like, it, I don't think it's a mile thing.
I think it's because we send.
I think it's a, um, it's a trade school that you're a member of.
Oh, correct.
Um, so.
So we send kids from here to Monty Tech.
Leavenster has a trade school. They don't participate in the Monty Tech program. Correct me if I'm wrong, but so because they don't send students to Monty Tech, they have their own trade program and they can do in their curriculum as they see fit.
So if we decided not to be in this Monty Tech contract, then we could.
Yeah, but we're not.
But, yeah, I'm not suggesting, but I'm just saying like that, that's what's binding us, is that we're in this contract voluntarily.
Yeah, it's the contract plus the state law.
But we would, I don't see this as ever stopping.
Cause we, cause we could never offer what Monty Tech offers.
Right, right. Yeah. So and, and I think that's fair.
There's a lot of politics about that too. So I mean, there's been a lot of state politics about.
I understand that there's this push. I know that last year, one of the select board, or two years ago, voted no for the override because we don't offer trade programs.
But we can't by law.
But we can't.
Right, right.
But we have our delightful policy that we're going to be talking later, um, about, which is about the amount of exposure that we have to offer our middle school students to the trades via Monty Tech and how we have to document that and report it to the state. That's the second read policy tonight.
Interesting.
I'm just wondering, someday we could work out something with Monty Tech, like a.
Stay away from this and we'll stay away from that.
No, like an after-school program?
I mean, I, I'm just gonna warn you, the politics of trade schools are, it's, it's a, Senator Cronin is very involved. He's, because of the way that they choose kids to go to trade schools, we've not talked about it in this forum, I think, I agree with Senator Cronin, uh, you know, because trade schools around the state can select students, they don't have to, it's not just a lottery. Lunenburg has to take every child. Monty Tech can choose who they take. There's been some changes at the State Board of Education about that. I mean, just so you know, I mean, it, there is a sort of a minefield, right? Dr. Fortuna, um, and, and that this would, you know, I think the sentiment behind it is really good and I actually think that there could be some benefits to our students, but I just think it's something bigger than us.
Yeah, not so.
So the next one on the list is, uh, research funding grants, research funding grants for after-school education options for students of all ages. We already do that. There are policies that will cover that, provide after-school educational options, same thing, same policy.
That's mostly self-funded, like by students themselves. We do after-school activities.
Yeah, I was just gonna say.
I mean.
They're not really offering them right now.
Right. Well, they do them.
Turkey Hills.
Turkey Hill does sometimes.
Yeah, there's a waitlist though of our.
They don't.
Yeah. Yeah. So I guess like, what is, um, creating that waitlist? Is it like space funding or both?
It's funding.
Just funding? Okay.
Funding and personnel, do you run it?
When our budget, when our budget is the spare bones, you have to make decisions and.
Uh, but continue to seek grant opportunities for school buildings upgrades. According to the bill, green building standards, we are always doing that. Um, we did that with the, the mini-split units. And so that's just a part of the process that we always engage in.
Yeah, in the primary school.
We only recently started engaging in that.
Do you know who manages that? Like who watches out for those grants?
Is it you?
Okay.
So yeah, the Green Communities Committee, I'm also on that.
Well, I'm there.
Yeah. So, um, yeah, so when you're talking about mini-splits, I was like, that, um, put on a light bulb in my head, but yeah, of, um, are you aware of Green Communities? Cause I'm sure you are, but yeah, they've done a lot of grants for, um, in, yeah, most recently, primary school for the mini-splits. But definitely, yeah, reach out to Dave Flat for, and I'm glad you're aware of, of that as well. So that's really mostly what that pertains to is like, let's keep, um, working with those types of grant programs for the school upgrades when we're considering, um, HVAC or weatherization and all of that.
I think it's, um, very interesting. We're gonna have a conversation about the MSBA later, but there's increased funding. Um, I'm thinking specifically of Turkey Hill. If you, for different levels of lead certification, um, for your green building as you build. So, um, that is definitely is something I think the committee will be looking at if we decide to pursue a new, a new build for Turkey Hill.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, yeah. And, um, there, if for another thing for like new builds is like we'd have to have all the, um, since we're a green community, like, um, uh, what's the underground heat system?
Geothermal.
Yeah, like geo, you would have to like explore like you, things like geothermal or whatever. Like definitely couldn't be like gas or oil type of situation. So funding, yeah, for that would be needed.
Uh, the, the next one on this, the upgrade school facilities to meet accessibility standards. We are always dealing with that. We have dozens of policies. There is state law, there are federal laws.
But we're not doing it.
We are not.
Right. And I think that's where it all comes back to.
That's why it's on the master plan.
And it is ultimately money. Um, the, you know, like the example that's easiest to call to mind is we are trying to figure out a way to understand the impact of renovations of Turkey Hill that do and don't trigger revamping the entire building for accessibility purposes. And it's all just money. So this is something we're doing all the time. We are limited on implementing things because of grandfathering rules and funding. Um, and then the last one, develop uniform town signage and also consider non-light polluting lighting. Start with municipal buildings, consider all at one point. I have no idea what that means. So I don't know.
So, yeah, I'll try, I'll try to explain this. So, um, when, so you know, when you go and you see like bright fluorescent lights, um, I think, you know, it's mostly like for businesses, cause this started out more, more vague of like all town signs. But so it's, it's been narrowed down to just the municipal buildings. And I know, I don't know if we already have a policy on this or if we're, something we already work on of like in terms of like the town built, the signs and things that are outside of, maybe for you guys would be the schools, like all the school signs. Would we ever have, I know we have the light outside of, um, the, on that side of the road with like the advertisements. But, um, for like the, the actual signs and the lighting to have like a uniform town sign, um, like in terms of colors, font sizes, just to like make it more cohesive, um, looking.
Branding for Lunenburg. Like you see a sign and you know that that's a.
Yeah, essentially.
The, uh, policies around the blue knight, the usage of the blue knights, but I don't think we have anything on signage per, in particular. Is that right?
We don't. I, just the electric sign.
There's a town, there's a town policy on that.
Oh.
There is, there's a town policy on that.
Kim, the answer is always asked, Liz.
Is the town policy or we follow, do we follow the town policy?
Yeah, in that town policy.
You mean like what signs are allowed or what they should look like?
So there are town, there's a town policy that tells us what election signs that we can put out, all different types of signs. So, um, if you're the town manager, you'd be able to get that. I probably do have it in my.
Like sizes, I think.
Mine is your local.
You're more talking about like a cohesive look for signs, so that when you see a sign and it's that font and that color, you know it's a Lunenburg municipal building?
Right. Like as we replace signs, like they're replaced using, having this specific look to it. And it's not like a backlit bright sign, like bright sign, because like we're also like environmental purposes for light pollution, um, but then also write like a, a town branding, like cohesiveness. So like as we replace the town buildings, it has to be like this shade of green with this font color. I mean, I know it's relatively.
Yes, well, shade blue, I wish we honestly would just pick, pick a hex code and that's Lunenburg blue.
Right.
See, yeah, no, no, it's exactly what they're talking about. No, we don't have that. Yes, I really wish we would just pick a shade of Lunenburg blue and that's our blue. Um, and I'm, we have a lot of different signs and some of ours are hand carved. So I wouldn't wanna change the hand carved signs, but.
We could make a requirement that the signs have to be hand carved.
Can't afford that, no. Signs of the primaries. But I do, I, I'm always.
I just want the signs to be adorned with clothing items.
Yes.
The more, the more, the better, yeah.
Yeah, if that's the rule that all signs must have certain clothing items strewn over them, okay.
Yes, absolutely, I'll I'll have it in there for town meeting. Okay, so overall, though, you guys are receptive to that, so like if that were to come to fruition, the school committee wouldn't be like, no, we don't want this uniform town signage because we don't want to have that on our school signs.
Have in-depth signs like we have, cause they're representative of the kid.
I would prefer that it be guidelines and not rules.
Okay.
Because of the cost issue, sometimes in a hurry, we're gonna get a sign and we're gonna get what's cheap. But if there were general guidelines and we had the time and money, then, I mean, this is beyond our, this is you and facilities, yeah.
Yeah, it wouldn't be like we would require the model to change, it would be like as things are.
But even as things break, sometimes, for example, this summer, we needed to, in a hurt, we relocated to from TC Passios to Turkey Hill. And so our facilities director got an awning and he got a sign that says superintendent's office and that happened very quickly.
Yes, and it has no light pollution at all.
Like you can't even see it.
Exactly. So.
Really?
That backpack, we need it light on.
So.
Okay, um so I would prefer it be guidelines personally because um I would hate for branding to get in the way of uh spending dollars on students.
The other thing is a lot of the signage on campus, if you notice, is gifted. And so like it would be very difficult to mandate that people give us things like that.
That's fair, okay.
I think that, you know, the school may be like the Christmas tree with homemade ornaments as opposed to the Christmas tree with Pottery Barn ornaments, but no one likes the Christmas tree with Pottery Barn ornaments.
Right, yeah, okay.
They're boring.
Yeah, but if they were guidelines and we had to get a new sign for somewhere and we had.
Right, and you had the ability to make those decisions.
Look and say, what are the town guidelines, but I would rather not be beholden to rules, we have to fa- follow stylistically because those extra dollars that we would have to spend if we might put those come direct, those come out of funds that we'd like to spend on students.
Yeah, no, that makes sense, perfect. Um no, this was, this was wonderful, I'm very glad I was able to get your feedback on these.
Thank you for doing this work.
Thank you so much, sorry we took a while to do.
It's okay, it was before December tenth, which is really the final deadline, and you're not the last ones.
We made it.
Oh, good.
Still waiting on uh plenty more, just ironic, um that we charge is activity. But soon, but okay, well, thank you very much, I'll reach back out if I have any other questions, but yeah, so no need for any additional follow up. Unless I reach out to you, but.
Actually, can you email me your slides from last night?
Oh, yeah, the town.
Find it on the website.
Oh, yeah, um I, they're put up however with Jen.
Okay.
Put the other town manager, she has them and all of them, but yes, I can also forward that to you as well.
Cause they were really informative, he went fast, which is good, really fast, but.
Yeah, we had, there's definitely a lot of details on them and we had more slides at our like public info sessions.
Oh, so that is it the.
It was very similar to the one, if you attended the most recent one at Smokestack, um but.
On YouTube, so I'll go.
I'll just send it to you, it's easier, just because it has a listening content, um so yeah, I had to go fast, didn't want to take up too much time, so really didn't expect to be there until midnight, but at least it wasn't midnight ten when the lights went dark. Thank you, thank you Emily.
Thank you.
All right, uh that's a very good segue into a short discussion, please. Of uh Turkey Hill, so here's what I think we should do a little bit differently in Turkey Hill.
Can I just talk?
I think we should have each person have three minutes.
Can I just tell you what I learned, cause I think that's going to determine what we should decide.
Or if we need a discussion right now.
Right.
Sure, all right.
So uh I was tasked with talking to someone at the MSBA, I talked to the Director of Operations the other day. He said, do not hire a consultant and do not decide at this point whether you wanna renovate or you wanna build new. That is the process that the MSBA goes through. So he said, if we wanna apply, there's two tracks you can apply for. There's a track which is a their core program, which is like possible renovations or up, you know, uh or rebuilds. Or there's a second track that is more replacing windows and doors, replacing um ceilings, not ceilings, roofs, those kind of things. This January, they're opening the core program for input. The renovation program or the smaller project program only has openings every other year. Um I sent everyone a, or we posted it, Jody put it, uh Dr. Fortuna put it in the folder, uh the MSBA presented at the MESA conference last week. Um there is a webinar in January that talks about how you would submit a letter of intent to the Mass School Building Authority. The percentages of people they accept on the renovation side is very high. I think on the core program side, it's not as high, but I don't know what they did this year because they don't announce who they're choosing to enter the pipeline until December. I said, do we need a feasibility study, do we need any of this stuff? He said, no, you don't, but any information you have to share. Ie the reports that uh Dr. Fortunis had shared previously. Um the Mass School Building Authority goes every ten years, they come and look at schools, ten years ago, Turkey Hill got a three out of four, which is not good. Um and they're coming again this year, it's it's like on, they come and look at facilities and you know, how does it look, what all this stuff? You can find it on their website, I can send links to people if they want, but I did some research yesterday. So I would propose that we ask the school committee, I mean, that we ask the superintendent and her staff with help from the school committee to attend the, you know, attend this thing in January, see what a letter of intent process would look like. And we submit to, you know, to the school, to the Mass School Building Authority. Um we could get, you know, I think thirty seven percent is their floor, they pay thirty seven percent of whatever you do and it goes up from there. Um I just don't know why we wouldn't try to get money from the state for whatever we're doing.
And then we don't have to have the renovate or build new discussion.
Because they're the ones who will facilitate and pay for that.
I was so excited to read that part of it.
Cause they ultimately decide if we would renovate.
We would ultimately decide, but they would pick us to give us a grant so we could have these kind of conversations and have an actual engineers and stuff, give us, you know, like people who do this work, give us options basically, if you go through the pipeline.
And I'm hoping that.
The grant would be for a specific amount, right?
We would have to be chosen for the grant, which would then, it sounds like they, and Dr. Fortuna, I don't know if you've been through this in other districts, but of course, right, I mean, is this how it works? I mean, it's an eight year process, it's a long time, but I think it can be up to, I have a friend who works in Air Shirley, she said, you know, they're in, they're in the queue, you know, it takes a while. But I I just don't know why we wouldn't have experts help us figure out what we need and possibly get thirty to forty percent of it paid for by the state.
Do you wanna do the core program or the accelerated repair?
Why don't, let's, let's listen to Dr. Fortuna.
Okay.
I agree, we should become involved with MSBA.
Yeah.
I don't think we should do the accelerated repair, that building needs more than the accelerated repair.
Yeah.
I am totally in favor of doing a statement of interest, but it's not just a letter.
Yeah.
It's a, it's a huge lift.
It's a big pro- project.
And so we would need help to do that, given the amount of staff that we currently have.
Okay.
Um with just having Chris in the business office, Chris Stevens and myself being the primary workers on it. Um it would require a bigger team and process to do it.
Okay.
Um having done it before, they need to be carefully crafted if, cause it's a highly competitive process.
Yeah.
If you want your building selected, but I'm not saying that that's an impediment not to do it.
Yeah.
I just want the board and the community to be aware of what a heavy lift it it will be.
Okay.
And we'll learn more about it in January, that's why they do the superintendent table in January.
Yeah, and I signed up even though then I realized it was superintendent, so I don't know if I can go, but I figured I would listen.
You don't check your superintendent.
It's on Zoom, so I figured I could just listen. Um, thank you, so I, so I'm not, so I will publicly say, I'm not against hiring someone if that's the way to go. But I also don't want us to just be, you know, like committing to just hiring and hiring and hiring. But I really feel very strongly, I do not wanna decide renovation or build in a vacuum, and I feel like that's what people want us to do, and I just don't, I just don't feel comfortable doing that.
No, I I agree with what you're saying, I will learn more about the process, but I do know in other districts, I've been in three districts now that have had, one was um a renovation.
Yeah.
One was, and two were complete new builds.
Yeah.
Um and it is a lengthy, highly competitive process um that I might recommend a consultant to, that's had success and getting one of these through to help.
How much does that kind of thing cost?
I don't know.
Okay, I mean, that's just, so can you come to us next meeting with a rough cost, and I imagine you might know people already that.
I do, I I have one person in mind that um was responsible for the new middle school in Hudson.
Yeah.
Um so that, he could be a possibility, he's recently retired. Um so that could be a possibility, um I could come to um with that. And then um some examples, I think there's public examples of statements of interest.
Yeah, I Googled it a little bit, it looked like some, some of it has questions already populated. So then I didn't really know if that meant that we had to wait till January to see what kind of questions they were asking, he did say to me, and I had a very short conversation with this gentleman, but I learned better talking to someone, so I wanted to find someone who worked there. Um, you know, he basically said all the stuff I mentioned, right, was things that we would wanna submit with our letter of interest, right, like our ADA uh report and the things that had been done, but, you know, and it is a competitive process, but I just feel very strongly, I do not wanna make a decision about renovating a building when I have no idea what that means.
And I think we're a realistic timeline, the process opens in January and closes in April.
Right.
So we really need to evaluate if within that four month window, if we do it this year or if we delay
Yeah.
To next year.
Okay. Um the other thing, just so you know, what he told me about the Excel, uh his name is Matt Donovan, uh the accelerated um uh repair program, it does have a much higher percentage of people that they accept, but he said, we don't put lipstick on a pig. So if your building was born, built in, you know, nineteen sixty seven.
Our windows are too old for some of them.
You know what I mean, uh he didn't, obviously, he has no authority of what they're, but he acted like, sounded like that's not what we were
Yeah.
really looking for.
Would you recommend starting this year or waiting a year?
I need to refamiliarize myself with the process a little bit more um before I can make a solid recommendation.
Can we talk about it in two weeks?
Without being acceptable and then you'll get a little more information.
Yeah.
And then I'm relieved that MSBA will facilitate the discussions about renovation or rehab because it's, we we don't need to keep rehashing with the information we have. Um and I think it's important to note that we're, every town in Massachusetts goes through this periodically where they have to refurbish or build new a school, so we're not alone in this and there are people who know what to do.
That's why it's a competitive process and I, I do believe that this would be a huge first step for us.
To to go through, and if we go through the competitive process and we don't get chosen, which happens.
Submit again another year.
We submit another year, or we'll have at least a sense of where we are in the, right, because there is some public response.
Yes, you have to present in front of the board, you, there's a lot of work.
It's pretty.
I'm just gonna say this, and I I don't, I don't know if anybody wants to hear this, but I do not think that we should submit a letter of intent this year. My understanding from when we looked at this last time was that the letter of intent process is incredibly complex. And it's not that you get penalized for doing it, like you don't, like if you fail one year, they don't like bump you down the list if you submit the next year. It's that the amount of time and energy we would spend doing a crappy one one year is not that much different from the amount of time and energy we would spend doing a good one if we had more of a runway. And I think that if we're talking about opening it in January, like that's less than, what is it? It's less than fifty days away.
It's due in April.
Yeah, yeah, but like the process starts officially, the shotgun goes off and you, you know, the race starts in January where you're getting information, you know what they're looking for, you know what they're gonna prioritize in terms of funding. And so like we would, we would be too far behind the eight ball to start now. Especially given that we have a new superintendent, a new business manager and a looming fiscal crisis that we're going to have to deal with. So I think that we should explore this, but I would be, it would be hard to persuade me that it would be best to just shoot our shot, you know, as soon as possible, like I don't wanna do, I don't wanna do a half ass job, I wanna do like a full ass job or whatever the o- opposite of that is. And so like, I'm I'm happy to go about gathering information, the information that we gathered last time was very similar, I am also concerned about the opacity of the process. It is daunting to figure out, especially beforehand, what they're going to claim is a priority. And so we would like, we're essentially gonna start building this plan without knowing what they're gonna say is a priority. And that is really challenging, and I think that like if we had a plan ready and then learned what their priorities were, we could modify the plan to meet those priorities. As opposed to making the plan and learning of the priorities at the same time. So like I I I definitely do not wanna put this on the back burner, I would like to have some kind of forward movement. But I think that the runway that we have right now is just not long enough to do a job that will make a difference. Like we will spend an enormous amount of time and energy for people who don't have it on a process where we're not going to make it this year. Like I I just can't foresee us putting together anything with the current staff that we have that will win a bid. Maybe I'm wrong, and I'm I'm happy to be convinced I'm wrong, but I just think that like this is, this is not a, you know, like, you don't like have ChatGPT write you a letter. It is a much more in-depth thing, and since we don't even know what they're gonna prioritize.
But we're never gonna know what they're gonna.
I just dropped a sample SOI from twenty twenty four.
I was wondering about that.
To your packet.
So I would like to wait till next week and see what Dr. Fortuna has to say, because I think she has a handle on the time demands that and the time that her and Mr. McNamara and Mr. Stevens couldn't even put into this and um I imagine I should probably talk to her consultant, see what's feasible, but I am not a fan of delaying if we don't have to, I think there are a number of things in town that sort of hinge on what we decide to do with Turkey Hill. I think last night I asked if they could hold off on the Kids Kingdom till we made a decision about Turkey Hill, so I'd like to not delay at least starting this process. We've been waiting a while in line for this, as Carol said, when it's our turn in line. And I think it might be our turn in line and we should probably step up.
That's fine, but.
I I just think the only way through hard things.
I understand your concern.
I think the only way through hard things is through hard things, and we're always gonna be overworked and underpaid, and that's just how the world works. And so if we don't make it, I just.
You can't do all things all the time, that's my point.
Let's see what next, let's see what next meeting is and then we'll.
Sure.
Give me some time and I'll let you know uh where, if we have the capacity to do it and do it well.
Yeah, absolutely.
Because I don't wanna do something that I I am taking to do well.
Next year, you know, maybe we then look at it in two years, but the thing is, I am not, I am not willing to leave the money on the table. So the only way you get the money is going through the process.
We also need.
Right, I mean, the, the state is not gonna chip in if we don't go through the process, so that that's the catch twenty two.
And the town manager also has to sign off.
Yep, and the select ward and stuff, I did read that um that that has to be submitted when you submit in April.
So we should, we'll have to, we should maybe mention that uh
Yeah.
At the tri board maybe, and I I guess the message here is if it's a no, tell us no and we'll hear you. Um so let us know for next week.
Two weeks, I will definitely do that.
That's a lot of things we added to the agenda.
All right, let's uh, can we skip the Turkey Hill discussion since we just.
Yes, that was the Turkey Hill.
So we did two things, I was, I cannot get my, nothing is working.
Oh, no.
What was the next agenda item?
The municipal design building committee?
Yeah, that was, it was supposed to be the planning committee, um I named the wrong committee for this.
Oh, okay, the one that just.
We just had that.
Oh, excellent, that's great.
That is one of the reasons why I was confused about what was being asked, cause I I got those two committees. That is one of the reasons why I was confused about what was being asked, because I, I got those two committees mixed up. And I was like, we just talked about this. But it was my, me being dumb.
Oh, okay. Cause I'm like, I got.
Yes, we're on nine vans.
Oh, we had good news on vans.
Yes, we have good news on vans. So.
We thought we spent the van money on iReady.
Oh, yeah. So.
No, we got. There was confusion about it because of the way we.
Great, because we had spent money on iReady and Board.
We did.
And then that, that's when I saw this, I thought, wait, didn't we already spend this money?
We had two general earmark appropriations. That is what we used. To pay for iReady and the other vans that I presented to the committee. We also had a very specific earmark was that the district was not to expend. Less than a hundred ninety five thousand dollars to purchase. To, to purchase transport vans for students. So I updated, I went and I got updated quotes from Jurey today. I'm going to actually ask you to just look at the second quote. For.
The low roof?
The low roof. Um, the high roof vans are kind of like the people movers, the Mercedes people movers that you see. We could get one of those. However, the driving would be more difficult.
And that was for twenty twenty five and the bottom ones for twenty twenty six.
Yes. The twenty twenty six, the issue would be we visit, we couldn't take delivery for three to six months. But that I think is worth the trade off to have an easier driving vehicle. Since we will be having staff trained. This van for, one van is sixty seven thousand four hundred nineteen dollars. That comes kitted out with the seven D package, which is what we need to legally transport students.
How many kids does it fit?
We will only be able to fit seven students on each one, plus the driver. We can't buy a larger van because it's now illegal in Massachusetts to do that. So that's why it'll be a seven passenger van. So we'll have two. So we can transport fourteen people. And that comes up to, I think I did the math, it's something like a hundred twenty four thousand as a round number. That will leave us the remaining money to pay for licensing for whoever's going to drive the van. As well as provide stipends for whoever's going to drive the van because. Our staff isn't going to do it without compensation.
Are we thinking coaches mostly for like sporting events?
Um, it won't be, we're thinking assistant coaches. Right now. Because the coach has so many other responsibilities.
But there are certain teams that have under that many kids.
So Shanina and I are going to work to figure out the differences, but these can also be used for more than sports. We can use them for science olympiad. We can use them for our A students. Because we don't have any students that are physically impacted right now. So we could use it to transport them to their job sites and we'll lose the transportation reimbursement. That we have.
Is accessibility and our ability to transport students with physical handicap gonna be an issue?
Not with these vans because we would just have to.
We could always hire.
We would still have to hire a wheelchair van.
I just wanted to check on that.
Okay, let's do it. We have a lot more to talk about.
Do we need more than one quote? Do we know anyone who owns a dealership?
We probably do need more than one quote because I'm sure Jurey is not on the state bid list. I will work on that.
But this is a rough cost and we can afford to.
This, this is the actual cost that we went with Jurey. So, and we can afford to.
Let's do it. Do we have to vote?
Yeah, it's a discussion.
Perfect. And thank you for looking into this.
I'm sorry that I'm pushing us along, but we have to talk about budget and we have to talk about cashlessness.
Thank you for looking.
Sorry, I don't want to rush you. I just. And you, I was, we're all at town meeting later than I was last week.
Preliminary discussion of the budget.
Another late dropped into your folder is an initial FY twenty seven budget memo that I'm just going to actually. Read right now. This is our initial budget memo. It's the preliminary version of the superintendent's budget. And I'm informing you of some key assumptions, drivers and personnel priorities. As we begin the development of the fiscal year twenty seven budget, I'm ready to provide the committee with what I just said. Our primary strategic goal for this budget is clear. Despite rising operational costs, we must maintain our current staffing levels. That is not an option in this budget. We cannot sustain any staffing lots.
And further staffing.
Yes, and add critical positions to support student intervention and enrollment needs. This has been heard loud and clear from the people that are closest to the work, from our school administrators and from our student data. To achieve this, we are prioritizing people over paper. Making the difficult decision to pause funding for significant portions of general supplies. And to invest in direct student support. The key budget drivers and fixed costs blow my mind this year. Our health insurance, we have projected an increase of twenty percent. This is our most significant driver this year. Student transportation, we have a potential increase of fifteen percent. General supplies, given the market rate and the research that I have done on this, tells us to budget twelve to fifteen percent. Increases for that. And our salaries, our teachers are getting a three point five percent COLA. And our paraprofessionals are getting a three percent COLA. So that, all that is, if we did level funded, our budget would be up by that amount. So given the twelve percent inflation on general supplies and the steep hike in healthcare, a business as usual budget is not feasible. To, or in other words, a level funded budget is not feasible. To offset these costs without reducing staff, we are recommending a pause in specific general office supply purchases. As determined by the principal and staff at each building and approved by the superintendent. One of my goals with this budget process has been to be very transparent with our staff. Um, so that they know what's happening and there are no surprises for them. We are not, because I'm convinced this is part of what the mistake was last year. We will not be providing nine budgets. We will be providing three if asked. We will provide a level service budget, a level funded budget. And a necessary increase, a prioritized budget. We are building the prioritized budget now. And we are going to support interventionists, paraprofessionals and teachers. Because that's gonna provide a higher RRI for our student success than some of the materials that we're currently using. Our assessment of student data, particularly regarding academic intervention, requires us to add specific positions. Below is the breakdown of necessary additions and restructuring by building and department. I want you to know this has been shared with all teachers except for our middle school teachers, which is going to happen tomorrow. But any teacher that wants to come to one of Chris and I's wonderful chats about the budget. Um, we've completed the cycle at three of our four schools.
Thank you for doing that.
We, yeah, it's been fun. Actually, I've really enjoyed them.
It's good to meet everyone. Not meet, but just to re-upleme.
And we've also gathered teacher voice group surveys, which further backs up the strategic additions. We are not replacing everything that is cut. We, I truly believe that that, last year, I truly believe that that is an unreasonable ask. Given how much the cost of other things are going up for the town. So I met with the principals. We prioritized a strategic three year. Strategy to get back to those staffing levels. And this is what we prioritized for year one. At the primary school, we're gonna add a one point O interventionist to address early literacy and math gaps. We're going to do some kindergarten support restructuring. And this, I want to credit the staff at the primary school for coming up with. This was not an idea that I would have come up with, but they came up with it and it's very workable. We're going to add a one point O kindergarten paraprofessional. We're going to do that by identifying strategic cuts in supplies. That Mrs. Squire believes that they can achieve the salary. We're going to reassign the existing MTSS paraprofessional to kindergarten. So this impact will allow for more equitable support across four kindergarten classrooms. We still have that fifth one that's not there yet. But two classes will have special education powers in them and two will have general education powers in them. And there will only be one classroom that doesn't have a specifically assigned para to them, but we will work something out. And this almost meets the original ask that Ms. Squire had for three paraprofessionals. And so we were very excited to get to this point. The staff was very happy that we got to this point.
Years ago, that's, we, I mean, we're getting back to staffing levels. There have been so many cuts that there used to be a para in each kindergarten classroom.
And we had six kindergarten teachers.
Which is a very reasonable thing to have. And having had a kid go through when we had the pares and a kid go through without. I think it's, it's a little ridiculous. We don't have pares in kindergarten. I do not know how these kindergarten teachers are doing it.
Not with the class sizes that they have. They have large class sizes for kindergarten and they don't have assigned pares.
I also think that by prioritizing kindergarten, we will redound benefits throughout their time in Linnburg.
Yes, that is a fundamental year. So this is, I am very frustrated that we are getting. That we have gone so far and we have made so many cuts over the years that now we're getting back to where we were. When my oldest kid started school ten years ago. But this is, I'm, I'm very excited.
This is a necess, this is necessary.
This is excellent.
At Turkey Hill Elementary School, one of the cuts that you made last year, you may recall, is. A special educator. And we now have one person doing the role of special educator and interventionist. It's untenable. She can't meet her special ed caseload and provide intervention to students as well. She and I met last week to establish some stopgap measures that could help her get through this year. But next year, we really need to have a one point O interventionist at Turkey Hill. Especially when only forty six percent of our third grade is reaching reading proficiency. Our, at the middle school, again, it's an interventionist. As you can see, we're prioritizing intervention for our students. We need to close serious academic gaps that our students are demonstrating right now. At the high school, we are prioritizing adding a one point O world language teacher. Our rising eighth grade class is a hundred fifty five students. Our choices without adding any, our. Without adding the world language teacher would be not to offer world language in grade eight or to cut our Latin program. Neither of those were acceptable to Mr. Santri or I. So that's why we're prioritizing the addition of. The one point O world language.
And this was a cut of that last, was this a cut last year or was this a proposed?
I don't remember. It was somewhere on a list.
Is the.
The eighth grade class is huge.
So was the seventh grade? That's the bubble class.
Yeah, my niece is in it. Huge. Hundred fifty five students.
I think we did this cut last year. There was a snowstorm.
Storm or something.
I'm not kidding.
We also are prioritizing a point four music teacher because a point four teacher is not a huge ask. And this will allow Mr. Santri to move closer to his goals of offering more electives for students. We're choosing to offer those in the music realm because we are having such an increase in students that are interested in middle school band. That we may be able to build back a full band, which would be very, very exciting.
Which I think is a testament to the fifth grade band, the, Mr. Ballister's fifth grade band that is getting them into the music program when they're young enough to still think it's cool. And it get, and it's, it makes the bridge into middle school. And I think that's why we're building a much stronger program.
And you recall that that fifth grade band was something that we were able to restore this year. Which is continuing to help.
And my son is doing it.
In student services, we are re-adding, because this was a cut last year, a bridge teacher and a bridge paraprofessional. These positions are critical for our in-district programming for students requiring significant social, emotional or transitional support. We have really found this year not having that program has really been detrimental to those students. Social, emotional, learning and behavioral issues. And has created several more disciplinary issues here at the high school. Than we're traditionally used to having. We also need to add a one point O English language teacher. Because, and I'll provide you all of this data in subsequent. But our EL population is increasing greatly, our English learner population, which is wonderful. We're gonna have learners with the superpower. Of being bilingual, but we also have the responsibility of teaching them English. And then for district Y for administration, I feel very strongly. That we need to go back to a full-time athletic director and a full-time principal. Our students aren't getting the support from the assistant principals that they were able to get before. Because Shanina is really doing more of the athletic director work. They're both full-time jobs. And Karma can't do it all. And if you think about it, we really have half a principal in the high school. Because the other half of his time is spent here at the middle school. So it is essential to have two assistant principals there. So this preliminary budget represents a needs-based approach. By absorbing the twenty percent health insurance and fifteen percent transportation hikes and offsetting supply costs. We aim to attack the integrity of our classroom instruction. And Chris can give you the bottom line of what the budget is right now.
Wow, that's a, that's a setup for an LU. Let's, uh.
What's the number would be for all this? I don't have it memorized, but my computer died, so.
Do you want to look at the?
No, no, I think I know the numbers. So with all the additions, right now, the budget for FY twenty seven is looking to be. Twenty seven million eight hundred ninety five thousand four hundred and two dollars. Right now for FY twenty six, our budget's twenty six million point two. I don't know the exact number for that. It's twenty six point two million, but, um.
So that's an increase of one point six million or so.
About that.
What's the percentage? Was it eight percent?
We could do that on there.
And I think one of the other things Dr. Fortuna didn't talk about was another driver is utility costs. Um, I'm actually gonna be talking to you until tomorrow to find out exactly what we should project for. Twenty seven, twenty eight and twenty nine. Um, right now, I'm thinking it's gonna be about fifteen percent. I believe we budgeted a, a little bit around, it was. Two hundred and thirty five, two hundred and thirty six thousand for electricity in FY twenty six.
And that's one of the areas we're running a little hot in, right?
We're running what?
A little hot.
We're spending a little more than we.
Anticipated.
And they're still not super responsive. Like the power outage, they took a while to get here.
It's way better than it used to be.
At least, at least they're the same to consumers and to municipal. They're just jerks to everybody.
Honestly, it's a big number. It's lower than I thought it was gonna be. So, I mean, so I think that alone to me, it makes me feel like.
These are very strategic positions, like it is clear that these are well thought out. Strategic re additions to try and stem some of the pain of the cuts of last year. I, I, it's not too.
It's not a fix forever, but it's a strategic.
It's not too ambitious.
And a three-year plan.
This is not too ambitious. We're not going to, you know, we're not adding in another five foreign languages. And this is very doable. I, I guess I wanted to say thank you for being, this is very strategic. I feel like every single one of these adds, I wasn't aware of the EL teacher thing, but almost all of these adds are things that were on my priority list to restore. I actually called Dr. Fortuna to talk about the kindergarten paras and she said, "I have good news." Because the kindergarten para thing has really.
Yeah, I've heard from some families that it's just not, it's very hard.
I don't know how those teachers are doing it, right?
No, the new teacher started on Monday. Carla is no longer teaching kindergarten.
Well, we did our visit.
Carla was teaching kindergarten? Oh my goodness.
Yes, Mrs. Squire had been teaching kindergarten for about the past month.
She jumps in and does whatever. Like she is, she is everywhere doing every job.
Yeah.
She's a blessing.
She's Johnny Cash.
So I guess, yeah, and I'm, I'm really happy that we decided not to cut eighth grade world language. I think eighth grade is still too late to be starting a world language. So I would have vehemently fought against that. And I think that I, eighth grade is the bare minimum we can do for these kids. And we're offering very few languages compared to other places. Spanish, Latin, and French.
Spanish, Latin, and French.
That's actually, often Latin is rare, no?
We're not getting rid of.
We're not getting rid of Latin.
I love Latin. I took Latin.
I think, I think Latin's the most valuable language, actually. Because it helps you so much with English.
And I loved history, so it was, it's good.
Yeah. That's like a good. I could rant about how great Latin is forever. So I'm, I'm happy that we're accommodating that new bubble class coming up and that we put in the music teacher because electives are very important. I know it's not the core, reading, writing, arithmetic, but those electives are very important to students and they help with the scheduling difficulties at the high school because we are a small school. So we do not have as much flexibility as larger schools when it comes to scheduling.
All right, let's go down the line. Maddie, thoughts?
You know, I mean, this is the beginning of a long process. I'm very grateful that it seems like things are going well right now and that the staff has been so collaborative and that both you and Chris have been so available for, you know, the staff to talk to. So, you know, I'm, I'm happy with this. I think Monday, you know, we're gonna have a lot of questions from the tri board, but I feel confident we're gonna be able to answer the questions that they have. And, you know, and if not, we can always come back to them with more answers. But, you know, I think it's really important for us to continue to talk about how our great, our MCAS scores and other things are not where we want them to be. You know, and, and this community's children deserve the resources to make sure that they can be successful. So I'm, I'm.
Is this what we're presenting?
I'm pleased. I mean, it's, it's a big number, but it's not, it's not an insurmountable number.
Come on.
I'm happy to see the paras and interventionists back in MTSS. That was a big concern for me prior to being on the school committee as a parent of a child in the primary school especially. So I'm glad to see that we're starting to add that back in because without those, there's just, it's just a chain reaction of other issues, like I said earlier. So I think it's very helpful for the kids and the teachers.
My only comment, and this is the same comment I've made the last three years, is we are a very small school to have a full-time athletic director. And I'm not saying that we should split per time. But I think that if I were forced to choose between an assistant principal in a building that only has one full-time administrator, which is where we're at, and it's Karma, I would prefer to have two full-time administrators and no athletic director. I, I know that that's not popular.
Could you go with a half-time athletic director?
Could we add another principal and have two and a half vice principals and a half athletic director?
The job.
Oh, just because of the job.
Yeah.
I don't know how she's, she's doing two full-time jobs and this is not sustainable. That has to change.
Yes, okay. We could do a half-time athletic director.
Those are hard to find though.
Yes.
Like the quality. Because it is really important that we have a quality athletic director.
I, I, I don't think we should ever employ non-quality people. However, I am not convinced, and I have never been convinced, and I have basically gone along to get along, and I will do it again, that we need an athletic director. I just think that like, if it is between interventionists for third grade, where only 46% have a, a, a grade level literacy, or an athletic director that serves one-half of one of three or one of four schools. It's a very, very specialized, narrow role. And if you look at the number of students that are served by the athletic director, I, I just don't see it as being on the same level as the other things on this list with maybe the exception of the music teacher. But the music teacher actually serves two roles in that it provides school choice, which we know is very important for high school students, and it provides a, a scheduling flexibility. So like, if, if we're talking bang for our buck, I just, and I know that people disagree with me and that's fine. But like, at the end of the day, the athletic director is a want and not a need. And so like, if we're, if we're forced, I don't wanna choose any of this. I'd like to keep it all, but I, I just am not, I'm not as convinced that an athletic director is necessary. Now, Dr. Burnham, when she was here, basically explained that like, it made the superintendent's job significantly easier because a lot of the things that the superintendent was dealing with before the athletic director were things that were now dealt with by the athletic director. And so maybe that's a way to view it as having like, uh, you know, double dip impact like the music teacher, but I, I just, it's not the same. And like, you know, like at the end of the day, we're here to educate kids. And to the extent that sports keep them engaged in the school process, they have real value. And to the extent that they teach them, you know, lessons about sportsmanship and being a good teammate, they have real value. And to the extent that they teach them about, you know, physical fitness, they have real value. But the athletic director is one step removed from that. Like, that's what a coach does. And we're basically having a manager of coaches. And I think that like, spending money on administration when we have dire needs and student-facing positions is problematic.
So you just gave me a perfect segue.
Okay.
I have not included something in this report. Specifically because I wanted the school committee's permission before Monday to add it in. I would like to do a restructuring of the central office in order to get Chris more help. So what I would like to do is move Heidi over to Chris and have her continue her accounts payable. And there's some discussion with the town about the school doing their own payroll, which we're definitely going to need somebody to do. What we have to take off Heidi's plate is the data management and the state data reporting. That is not a full-time job. I'm asking to add a half-time data manager into the central office mix so that our state reporting is done accurately and on time since that determines our funding and we can't afford to make mistakes on that. However, that is not a full-time position. There's plenty of work in it. But we can definitely make do with a half-time position. So I wanted the committee to discuss that and let me know how they feel because I know the community is very anti-administration. This wouldn't be administrator, it'd be a clerical position.
Is there room in the budget?
Well, it'd be more than this number you just gave. Yeah, right.
Yeah, so.
Oh, you mean for next year, not this year?
For next year.
I thought this was, okay.
So I, so let's go down the line.
Can I just respond one thing about your athletic director comment?
Sure.
So as someone who was not athletic and did not play sports, much sports in high school, to me, athletics is part of the fabric of a community. Football games, events, community events, people being involved with things. So I understand what you're saying and some of the, and your position. But I wanna raise kids who are well-rounded, who have a lot of passion for, you know, lots of different things. And I do think that's just something that deserves a mention when we talk about education in a town like Lunenburg. It's, I, I understand academics are super important. I did not go to an Ivy League school, you know, I probably, I didn't work as hard as I probably could have, but I still had a full and, you know, happy life. And I think, you know, that's part of what we do too, is help people find what is important to them and it may be community. And athletics is a big part of that. Emily, do you wanna go first on the data person? I, I don't really have a strong opinion either way, honestly. I do think it's, it's a struggle to ask for more people in central office, you know. We are asking for a budget that's not cutting positions, so in that sense, I, I think I'm very open to it. I do think that we have an argument that we wanna be well-staffed with Chris. God forbid Chris got another job, like what's happening in the town. Do you don't like me?
Well, what happened to us before.
And what happened? No, no, I mean, but really, this is, this is a reality of the way, you know, municipal and town finance works. So that's my comment. I don't have a strong, either way.
I think it's a harder sell to the town. It makes an override or asking for more money than typically allocated to us more difficult because there is a preconceived notion that we should be cutting administrators. However, we run a pretty lean central office where we have people who are doing many jobs who are working way too much, way too many hours to get done what other districts have multiple people doing. So I am all for this because I really think that we, I, I've been pushing for this. I think we need more people in the finance office instead of you. I mean, you're doing great. I, I really think we need, we need to focus on that. I do realize it's a little bit of a harder sell because people just sort of gut instincts don't wanna have more administrators because they're not facing directly with students. But it's, it's a clerical position. And I think we could also negate that with, we are now in charge of our own, we will be in charge.
Yeah, especially if we're gonna be doing our own payroll. I mean, I don't think, so, we have to. I mean, I, that's not a.
I, I, I think it's a good idea.
One way that I can negate the perception of too many administrators is, and I've talked to her about this, is Amy, having Amy Resnick go back onto the teacher's contract and do more direct service to children. So she would still do some professional development and real-time data analysis. But she would primarily serve students as really a very talented interventionist. Not one of these intervention positions, but a separate one. And that would be removing one more person from an administrative role in the district.
So really, we're trading an administrator for clerical. Okay, good.
Just my, my two cents on this, I think that good fiscal practice requires us to have a backup for Chris. To the extent that we can move somebody around and fill that position, I think we should prioritize that. I also think that I, Amy has helped, helped me a lot in understanding the school stuff, along with a lot of other people. But I feel like she is an exceptionally good communicator of complex ideas. And so like, it's a good thing that we get to keep her. And the students, I think, honestly, will benefit from having her do direct, hands-on education. She is really, really outstanding. So like, if we're, if we're trading her role, but get to keep her for a person that does like clerical data entry work, it seems like a, a good trade-off to make. I, I do think that I would wanna make sure that whatever we do for whoever is, like, I, I understand, but I also wanna make sure that person gets trained so that like, if Chris goes on vacation, you know, Chris decides that he, he wants to do like an extended vacation.
He wants to not work on a weekend?
Right, right. We just have somebody that can kinda help him out. And I think that, you know.
And Heidi's very capable.
Yeah, Heidi's been great at a bunch of different roles. And I think that, you know, like the, the, the things that the town manager has said at the tri board meeting and in meetings that we've had, really convinced me that this is something that we need to do. And I think that our prior experience losing Mr. Cassidy and then sort of like wandering through the wilderness for a year and then what happened after that makes me more convinced that our, our finance office needs, needs to be beefed up.
And quite frankly, I think it will help take some things off Liz's plate as well. We can't survive without Liz. You know that already.
This is true.
But she is doing so much of the financial side as well. She could probably do Chris's job too. And I know I'm not insulting Chris by saying that. I think he knows that.
I'm sorry, I actually asked if Liz could do your job.
You know what? It doesn't surprise me. She, she could.
Yeah, I don't think she wants to.
But, you know, she's a treasure and I think being able to free up some time for her to expand her capabilities and her time as well will be a benefit of this.
And I think if we take the tact, this is more people in the finance office, which is where we need them. And this will help prevent things from happening in the future. So.
Okay.
Do you need a vote or is this just?
No, this is just information for me. And so you guys are not surprised Monday night when I mentioned this.
Okay. If you could figure out for the meeting, so I think it's an 8.1% increase but role in the clerical position and then figure.
How much did we say that? 30?
For the clerical position? 35?
Yeah. Yeah.
Can I, can I just add one more point about presentation and not necessarily the plan? We are the only department that carries health insurance in our budget. And so if we could have a breakdown of the number total, and then the number if we were treated like everybody else, right? Like, we have no control over the health insurance. And so when we say to the town, or we say to the citizens of the town, "Our budget went up by this much", we're actually not comparing apples to apples. And so like, just always have that as like a baseline.
Yes.
We, we can never, it's very clear to me, we can never give that back. But for completely arbitrary, non-legal reasons, it switched from the town to us when there was a freak occurrence of a surplus in, was it 1996? I forget what you told me.
Yes.
Yeah. And then it.
You just know that.
And then it bounced, and so like, we can't give it back. But it is not our cost and it is not comparable to any other department, so.
I still would argue it's our cost and other departments should carry the help.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. We can do it that way.
That is true. But like, when you say, I don't want you to go up there and say, "We're asking for an 8% increase" because the fire department, when they're asking for an increase, they aren't figuring in the 20%, of the health insurance.
But the overall town budget does.
Right.
Sure, sure.
But it's, it's like apples and oranges. They're both fruit, but they're.
I just wanna make sure that we can explain to people in a clear and consistent way. And we have given this up every time we've had this discussion in the last five years. It just, it's like, we're giving away our credibility and we're giving away a way to show people that we are good stewards of money. Because we are assuming something that no other department does. So if you think it works, fine. If you don't, that's fine. I just wanted to put it out there.
And that's interesting, Tony. I hadn't conceptualized, like, I, my feeling is it's all town money, right? Whether we're paying or not. I hadn't really conceptualized this idea of when other departments talk about their increase and it's a smaller increase, it doesn't include that health insurance.
Yes, so it's not comparable.
The town manager has to account for it in hers, which I think makes it more difficult.
Yeah.
To, this health insurance is separate, but we should.
And for the report for Monday, I believe that I've already put in the actual cost for health insurance for FY23, '24, '25, and the budgeted amount for '26, and the projections for '27, '28, and '29.
Okay, which is scary. And it's with the clerical, with the clerical, Tony, 8.2% increase, which I think is, again, less.
Right, so I guess what you're saying, Tony, is right, if you take out the health insurance, right?
What's that percentage?
What is the percentage look like?
And my guess is it's gonna be very comparable to every other part of town.
And so, and to her credit, the town manager last year gave the school district money to cover that delta.
Sure, she did.
In the, in the town manager's budget, right? So that what, she didn't make us account for that money, my understanding.
It's not, it's not.
But it's just it isn't it isn't an apples to apples.
It's not a it is absolutely.
When people reading ledger.
It is not a gripe with the town manager. And anyway, she was super fair to us. What I am trying to communicate is that when people on town meeting floor.
And the ledger.
Look at the number. I want them to see the number for what it is, which is we're carrying.
Fourteen point five percent of our budget is health insurance.
Yeah, fourteen point five percent of our budget is health insurance and no other department has that. That level of encumbrance. And I think that that is that is. Something that the but the townspeople need to know.
We're looking at.
Is it the increase in health insurance or health insurance in general? That's about seven hundred thousand.
Seven hundred fifty thousand four hundred.
With a twenty percent increase, I believe the projection is about seven hundred thousand dollars.
Twenty percent of what we're currently paying would be seven hundred fifty thousand dollars in health insurance. So seven hundred fifty thousand dollars of the increased.
One point six million.
One point six million.
Or one point seven.
Let's go with. Seven hundred fifty thousand, that is just health insurance that we are contractually obligated to pay and we should too.
All right, everyone's agreed with that.
Okay, are we good?
Yeah.
Did we give you clear?
You gave me clear instructions. I will be ready for Monday. Chris and I are working hard and we'll bring this home together. I really do. I I want to say this, and I know, Tony, you you just said it into the camera. I really want to thank the town manager for her partnership through this process. She has been more than fair. We've had some really good conversations. So I it's really been a joy to work with her here.
I completely agree. When I dealt with the previous town manager on the budget task force, it was a nightmare. This is way better.
That is fantastic to hear. Glad that you guys are working well together and the communication between departments.
Yes.
All right. So we are on to old business and.
Is there a chance we can put this off for two weeks or do we have to?
Which one is this?
The second reading policies.
Oh, we always skip over the second reading.
Oh, but we should discuss. We got a lot of feedback.
We got, yes, we got, well, we've got a lot of feedback from one source. That's all I got.
I I am having problems with the cashless thing, so.
Okay. Do you want to do that now?
I mean, do you?
So to be clear to people, the policy is not implemented.
No, 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 no.
No, we have to vote on it.
Right.
So if we do put it off, we're.
Voting on it next week.
How about how about?
No, if we, well, we need I would like to I would not like to do the second read unless we're going to have a discussion on it.
How about let's do this? Let's have a discussion of the points brought up for the cashless policy. In lieu of a second reading and then we'll go back, figure out if we need to go back to the drawing board. Because it doesn't make a sense. It doesn't make sense to do a second reading where we literally just read the same things we read last time. Without incorporating any feedback.
We also got feedback on the advertising at schools.
Oh, that's interesting.
Right? Yeah, we did. I thought the feedback on that was good. I thought it was good, too. Honestly, it was it was an easy. We can talk about it, but.
Okay, so do can we let's talk? Does anybody have an objection to tackling the? Instead of doing a second read, we actually talk about people's feedback, which I find to be way more valuable.
Yes, that's right.
Can I ask selfishly because Desi is writing me angry emails? Can we find a way to accelerate the middle school pathways for competency determination?
So that one we had no complaints about, so.
So that can be our second reading?
Yeah. Well, can I motion? To waive the second read only. For five-two-zero-one dot zero-three middle school pathways and for this to be considered the second reading and to ask again that people give feedback.
Second.
And five-two four oh one as well.
Oh, five-two and and to waive the second reading. Sorry, I'm going to continue the motion. Five-two-zero-four point zero-one competency competency determination to waive the second read for that as well.
I hold. Second that motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Yes.
All right, so.
We will do our third read in two weeks and then vote on it in two weeks and then that will become policy and then Desi can stop sending angry emails about that.
That's totally fine, yes.
So the here's the gist of the feedback that I got on the cashless campus. And I think this is probably stuff that we had talked about, but I wanted to read this. The this person actually sent me an email and I asked if I could read it aloud. And I think that her comments were exceptionally insightful, so I think this might help frame the conversation. It said, to whom it may concern, I strongly disagree with the new proposed policy regarding a cash-free campus at Lunenburg Public Schools. I think it is it is dishonorable to impose a disciplinary action on staff members and members of our community. That wish to be able to use cash. It is an imbalance of power. And strictly goes against the harassment and bullying policies of our students and our staff to follow. Imposing this upon our community will have a negative effect on sporting events. As well as make it difficult for grandparents, students and younger siblings to be able to attend a game. Without the freedom and independence away from having absolutely from. Absolutely having to rely on phones or credit cards to get in. In addition, I am sure there will be costs associated with having to implement a method of running credit cards. And the additional fees per transaction. Will this cash-free campus also include the snack shack? If so, you'll be taking away the opportunity for young individuals to practice using real money to buy food and drinks. Younger generation do not need a phone or credit card and mom or dad. Need don't need to be with them as they practice their independence in a safe, community-oriented space. Please reconsider this so that we have a way to enjoy sporting events and the like without other without another means of technology invading daily lives. You're going to have both simultaneously, but don't punish those that wish to use cash. Thank you for your attention in this matter. So I emailed her back and she emailed a bunch of questions that we're working on getting answers for her.
She brought up points that I had not considered with the freedom of the kids, which I think are very good points and have. I think I'll change my thinking on that a little because. If I don't want to send my kid to a sporting event with a cell phone to use an app to pay. I think that sometimes we make policies that encourage parents to have phones, to send their kids with phones, and I think we need to stop doing that.
So let me let me take the the pro-cashless position and then then I think we can debate this. So. The the first thing was over the summer, we had an accounting irregularity related to how. Cash was spent and paid to a coach. And we had a very difficult time accounting for where that cash came from. Fortunately, we had a very. A very responsible and very ethical person on the other hand, on the other side, and we were able to sort that out very quickly. But it exposed a weakness in our financial policies and our financial. Processes that made me concerned that this would be an easy place to exploit. And basically what I'm talking about is when you have multiple gates. And they're not manned by, you know, people that have. Like they're just manned by different people at different times. It becomes very difficult to track cash coming in. And if we can't track cash coming in, then it makes it difficult to figure out when cash was going out, which is what happened when the coach was paying. So that was one concern. The other concern was the fact that because there's no. Oversight at the gates. It's not just that like we couldn't control money, but it becomes an easy place for people. And I don't think this would happen, but you'd have to guard against it. It makes it an easy place for people to take money. That hasn't happened. We don't have any knowledge of that happening. But there are examples of that happening in other school districts in Massachusetts and throughout New England. And the process that we have for the cash or the cashless entry, it already exists. It uses pre-existing infrastructure and it does presuppose a credit card or a cell phone. And to the extent that it makes it difficult for grandparents or young kids. I see this as a. Classic example of there are no solutions and only trade-offs. One of the concerns that I have is that our credibility took a hit on financial things. For a number of different reasons, one of which had to do with how cash was handled. And if we're going to go to the town and ask for more money, we want to speak with a clear voice that we have engaged in. Practices to change how we deal with financial things, to make the money that taxpayers give us more secure. And so I think that from my perspective, it stinks that there's some negative implications of this. But the purpose of having good financial policies and being able to show the town. That we're, you know, cleaning up house and taking taking things seriously outweighs the cost. One thing that I was considering and thinking about, the concerns Jackie raised is. If we and I do think that she's right, and Laura, you raised this when we talked about a policy subcommittee. That it may be an undue burden on older individuals who are not as familiar with technology. And one way we could do that while keeping the cashless policy is to make entry into facilities hosting events free for seniors. And I think that that would do a couple of different things. Number one, it would allow us to preserve the cash policy. And number two, it would encourage seniors to participate in school activities more if they had to pay nothing. I think that, you know, if there's any barrier at all, getting rid of that barrier would, you know. It would be really helpful. I think, you know, like I remember watching the homecoming game this year. And there was a gentleman sitting in front of me and it was very clear that he had not had children in Lunenburg Public Schools for a long time. But he he got a great amount of joy out of watching the game. And so maybe we can sort of do two good things. We could practice. More financial security. And at the same time, we could encourage. Participation by seniors in more school events. So like I think, you know, the the other objection about kids going to the snack shack, I think the snack shack is a little different, but. You know, the the financial independence, that is a real issue. It's just a drawback. But again, I think this is an example of there are no solutions, only trade-offs. So that that would be my summary of the position in defense of the cashless policy, maybe with one amendment to allow seniors. And and you know, we can just go down the line and talk about what we think. Emily, what do you think?
I mean, I'm a little concerned, not just about the seniors, but about middle schoolers and high schoolers that might not have a phone.
Yeah.
Or another way to pay other than cash. I mean, I still send my fourteen-year-old to school with cash for some things. He doesn't have an app to pay or a debit card or anything like that, so. I'm not sure how he would be able to access things like a school dance or a homecoming dance or. And he's a he's an athlete, so he doesn't have to pay to go to games, but the snack shack, things like that. That's a lot. That's a big population of kids that are not going to be able to access some of the community things we're talking about. That then we're also not going to get any money for.
Yeah.
So they're going to take away funding as well.
I can't vote for this policy. I just there's too much feedback. I agree with the seniors situation. My kid is in fourth grade. He doesn't fifth grade. He doesn't have a cell phone. Plus, all the teachers who are running field like field trips, like all of that stuff. I mean, I didn't even think of that. We're not even just talking about games. We're like, I send my kid to school ten dollars so he can, you know. Go on his field trip, like selling tickets to the dance. You're going to make kids come in here with a credit card to buy dance tickets for student council. I just. I feel like I can't I can't support it.
And there wasn't.
And there's no solution for any of those.
I mean, there was a lot of negative.
There was a lot of negative feedback.
We don't get a lot of feedback on stuff. We got a lot of feedback on that.
I mean, if we're worried about the cash at the gates, we should just make going to games free. That's my honest opinion is that how much money do we make at the gate for football games?
It's hard to tell.
Right, so that's fine. So I.
You don't know how much money maybe a guy wins. That's a problem.
I would rather I would rather make it free. Do you know what I mean?
Or have a better system of.
Or have a better system of collecting it. I just. I just don't feel like we've thought through enough of the scenarios. Like if we don't have a solution for kids buying dance tickets at lunch, then I I just can't. Like kids are not going to go to the dance because they don't have a credit card. Like my kid's not going to have a credit card. Like. I hardly want to get him a cell phone when he turns eighteen. You know what I mean? Like I just think there's a lot of issues. You know, and my fat father, who I love dearly and is not terrible with technology, will not come to the football games if he has to download an app. I mean, that is the serious quote. I just I just don't. So if we can vote on it or we can do whatever, I just I'm not. I won't be voting for it.
When we originally talked about this, I thought we were going to take credit card payments or Venmo or something at the gate. I didn't realize it was going to be downloading an app.
Yeah.
And inputting my financial information. And I am a person who can't stand extra apps on my phone and will not download them. And I do not give my financial information to random apps that have not been vetted. And I know we talked about this. I was irritated enough about the Power School hack that got some personal information. My child was not affected, but the security of the financial information that we are now requiring people to submit. To a third party outside of our control. We don't. We have no ownership over the security of that information that we're requiring people to do. And I do think that if I had the choice between stopping into the game real quick to watch it for a little bit. And if I had to download an app to do that, I'm just going to make the choice not to go. So I'm very against it. However, I very much understand the issues that led to needing to come up with a cash policy.
Hey, they'll just walk in.
So I'd like to return this back to policy subcommittee.
Sure.
And I'd like us to talk about a different sort of policy we can do that can ensure that if someone mishandles cash. There are steps we can take because we did not have that.
So. Let me just offer this as a quiproble. In my experience, having dealt with this in my professional life, there is no recourse, right? Generally speaking, if the money is taken, like in almost every financial fraud case that I've ever handled. If the money is taken, it is spent before people detect it. And your ability to get that money back is almost nil. The law is not very good at compelling people to pay when they have no ability to pay. So you may get like some kind of punishment, like a suspended jail sentence or actual jail sentence. But you won't get your money back. You're just not going to get your money back. And to the extent that we would have like enough money that makes it worthwhile to have a lawyer. My guess is we would be paying the lawyer and probably not get any of our money back either. And so like. I I think that my concern is the remedies after the fact are not sufficiently strong. To to warrant us doing nothing. And maybe this policy isn't the right thing, but like doing nothing is like. We we got very lucky the last time.
I was thinking about the Ben Franklin quote about trading liberty for security and how. Maybe sometimes. We cannot have policies that address everything.
Sure.
And maybe we have to just live with that.
Are there policies right now in place for cash exchange?
No, which is why we tried to address it.
Why aren't we doing that?
Yeah, so let's go back to the subcommittee and look at. Something that tells people how to handle cash. Like there needs to be a receipt. You need to check.
Checks and balances, like if teachers are collecting for a field trip, I'm sure they have to. Put in the money, right?
We trust our teachers to handle that.
Oh, this was the this was never a problem.
No, I'm just that's just an example.
We're trying to make it is.
If if we're worried about moving forward with cash, like why can't we put a policy in place that. Clearly. Describes what we want to do with cash exchanges across all of these, the plant sale, the the field trips.
Yeah, we got to do all of the plant sales.
Like, do we have those? Are there any?
There are procedures in place. A lot of them are internal procedures. And making sure that. There's turnover sheets that we do. There's. Walking of money into safes at night if it's something like having to do with a field trip.
Yeah.
There's guidelines from the town that we have to follow.
Could that be made into policy?
What? I'm sorry.
Could it be made into policy instead of procedure?
Actually, we do have some.
All right, so let's.
It depends on what you're talking about, because that relates to different policies, but.
Let's send that back to policy subcommittee and we'll talk about it when it's not.
Almost done, Chloe.
Ninety-one.
Ninety-one.
Can we just talk about the feedback we got about advertising? Because I think that one we might just want to take the feedback then to go with, right?
We would have, yeah. Where is that? Those were really good points.
There was something about, you know, our our policy already says has some suggestions about prohibiting. about prohibiting certain types of advertising.
Mm-hmm.
Um, that this comment suggested we also wanna add political parties, lobbyist groups, or companies affiliated with political agendas or lobbyist organizations. I leave it up to this Policy Subcommittee to what that says, but I, I'm fine with that, and then also, um, uh, yeah, that was-
So just, so just some addition to the policy that we're doing.
Yeah.
Sure, let me take that back, too.
All right, we'll take that one back, too.
Okay.
Do we, how do we vote on that, just?
I don't think we have to vote it, we're just doing good feedback.
All right, we'll take that back to our next Policy Subcommittee. And I wanna say thank you to all the people who reached out with feedback. There was a lot of people engaged in the process and informing us, and I am so appreciative of all of that feedback, so, thank you. Okay, what do we got next?
All right, I'm sending, I'm sending an email to Jackie, just because she was so good.
She, that, it was fantastic.
Um, I think that we are on to-
We gotta do, uh, reports from Subcommittee, uh, public comment and reports from Subcommittee.
Any public comment?
I did not see any public comment.
All right, any, any Subcommittee reports, Emily?
No.
And, and he said, reports, Mandy?
No, I haven't been going to any Subcommittee, if I'm supposed to be, so I'm gonna go to the primary school on Monday.
Yeah.
Was, that's mine?
Yeah.
And PTO?
PTO, I go to that sometimes.
It's PTO.
All right, I got some.
Oh, God.
At least it wasn't PDA.
It used to be PTA. So, I am also on the three-hundredth committee. I am not a school committee liaison, but, um, I think I joined that committee before I joined the school committee. Uh, and I did, did get a question about the use of school grounds for the festival, because they want to have, like, five thousand people. We're looking at a couple thousand people, I told, we've already said no about the bonfire, cause of the sprinklers, um, so I am gonna ask again.
She's celibate, I appreciate it.
Yeah, can we light a giant fire on the soccer field?
We cannot light a giant fire on the soccer field.
Everyone's obsessed with the bonfire.
I know. I, I've had enough of fires this year.
Yeah, I just, um, asking about my, what I think we should do with the Brooks House. Um, so-
Speaking of-
Can we use the school grounds, like the soccer fields? I, I said no to the turf field unless we can perfectly arrange that, so we have the festival right before we rip it up. Can we use the school grounds? It would be in the summer, in July, when the fields, I believe, are normally closed to protect the grass. Um, we can talk about this later.
Yes.
But, um, they had asked if we could use the school grounds, because historically, we have used the fields for festivals and fairs. And then in the past, we got away from it, and we're told, no, you can't have things on the fields because of the grass and the sports.
Mm-hmm.
Um, but we, we can talk about that later. Um, but I, there's also going to be, we're hoping to do a logo contest for the three-hundredth anniversary. Um, and we wanted to extend that to schoolchildren, so few years.
Yeah, that's awesome.
And I thought it would be fun if we could just collect all their logo submissions and display them somewhere during the festival party. So it's gonna be, we're trying to do monthly events, but there's three main events. The first one is called First Night, first, uh, it's late, Night with a K, not First with a K.
Oh.
First Night, Night with a K, and that is going to be New Year's Eve, twenty-twenty-eight, or, yeah, so New Year's, New Year's Eve twenty-twenty-seven. And there will be either firefight, um, there'll be either fireworks or a laser show, and it'll hopefully be somewhere in town, maybe the center of town. We did this twenty-five years ago for two-seventy-five, um, the fireworks.
The fireworks, amazing, yeah. Do you remember that?
I do.
They were really good.
They still have my pen.
Yeah, yeah, so it's, it's really, it, I think it's gonna be great, it's gonna be like, either little fireworks or some kind of laser show, and a gathering downtown, um, I don't have my stuff in front of me. And then, there is going to be another event that I can't talk about yet, that's going to be a community event somewhere, um, and that one's gonna be super exciting, and I cannot wait till we can talk about that one. And then there's also going to be a birthday party festival somewhere, maybe downtown, maybe, um, near Pathway. We have to figure that out, um-
What about Marshall?
That's going to be, I think Marshall is too small, we determined, cause there's a lot of people who come. And the, that fair is going to be July twenty-ninth, which is the closest to Lunenburg's birthday, which is August first. Um, you should join the committee.
I'm thinking about it.
It's, it's, it's gonna be really fun, and there, oh, and there's going to be a parade on September tenth, I believe. And it's not going to be the homecoming parade, cause we had talked last year and decided that that was not enough time, cause the date is kinda set in stone, because the, what are the little tiny people? The people in the tiny cars?
Oh, um-
Shriners.
The Shriners are gonna be there, and so that date is kinda set in stone. And that's gonna be September tenth, I believe, and, um, there's gonna be floats, not built by the students, but by businesses or any group that wants to build a float.
The alumni are gonna wanna build floats.
I really think alumni should get in this and build floats, because how many years have-
Maybe so, I mean, I'm gonna build one.
How many years have parents watched their kids do this now?
Me and Julia.
Yeah, and it, so, you know, start building your float, maybe not now, um, but that's-
School committee float.
Oh, maybe we can do a school committee float.
Are you gonna do a school committee in twenty-twenty-eight?
In twenty-twenty-eight, yeah, so, it's, so that's gonna be September tenth, and then we'll hopefully still do homecoming as well, but we had talked last year about it and decided that that was not enough time for students to build floats, to combine it with homecoming. So, that is the three-hundredth anniversary, um, there was a whole bunch of other stuff, but I'm gonna skip that, and I'm gonna table that for next time, cause it's really late at night.
All right, I think we are done.
Okay, motion to adjourn? Oh, we can't, we've gotta do them, anything for future, but I think we put a lot of step on.
Yeah.
All right, motion to adjourn.
Yay, we're done.
Thank you, everyone.
Thanks, everyone.